Good morning. And welcome to your boardroom. It is May 3rd, and this is the regular meeting of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. And we're going to go ahead and start. Supervisor Bennett is on his way. He's just running a little late, but if I could please have -- start our morning with call to order.
Supervisor Bennett. Supervisor Michaels.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Flynn.
Thank you. And I'd like to invite now Don Mormon, King of the Glory Lutheran Church, Newberry Park, to provide us our moment of invocation.
Lord God, we thank you for our Board of Supervisors and all those connected with them who labor diligently to make large decisions and small decisions, popular decisions and unpopular decisions, but decisions that are necessary so we can be governed well. We ask that you guide this meeting today, guide the decisions that are made and the people who are speaking, so that this can be a time when our county can move ahead and be what we all want it to be. And Lord, we dare not forget something that's on all of our minds: Our troops who are in harm's way in Iraq, Afghanistan, Balkans, and other areas. Lord, protect them, help them do their duties well and with dignity, and bring them home soon. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you. I don't know if we could have a pledge of allegiance by our -- who are you? Marty.
Marty, CEO. The United States of America and through the Republic of which stands one nation underground indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She's wearing quite a few hats. There's a motion and a second to adopt the minutes of our meeting from Tuesday, April 26th. And good morning Supervisor Bennett. Yes, they are. Okay. So there was a motion, a second to adopt the minutes, hearing no objection, that's so ordered. At this time, we'll have agenda review. Ms. Robinson.
Yes. Item -- we're suggesting that item 28 be taken with item 23 at 10:30. Those two items are related. Also, item -- on item 32, your board has been provided with a revised letter for the chair to sign.
What was that, 32?
Item 32.
Okay.
Item 37, we just want to be sure that the agenda needs to read. It's an adoption of the bonds for Conejo Valley Unified School District. The letter covers that, but the implication in the agenda is that we are adopting bonds. Okay? And then there is also an addendum item 39 to the closed session calendar.
Okay. Any further agenda review items? Consideration for approval?
Move approval of the agenda as amended?
Motion is second, hearing no objection, so ordered. Okay. And next, we'll do our consent agenda items 10 through 13. There's a motion and a second. Any objection to that? Hearing none. Consent agenda is approved as presented. Next on our agenda, we'll have our public comment time for citizens making presentations to the county board on items not appearing on our agenda. And if you have an interest in doing so, please submit a blue card. And I will call up first and good morning Carol Dean Williams.
Good morning Chair and members of the board. Carol Dean Williams, almost 60-year resident Ventura County. I was hoping Mr. Johnson would be here this morning. I hope he's not out looking for me because I have excused absence from being -- missing the last two Tuesdays. So if he's out looking for me, he should come here. I have the articles in the paper about giving the CEO a 10.5 raise. Now, I've warned you about these zeros, so I'm here to remind you about the zeros. As far as I'm concerned, he's more than earned his keep, Supervisors Michael said. He's probably worth more than what we're paying him. I agree. He is worth more. He needs 11% to get rid of the zero. And the Afropol Johnson uses facts, persistence, and gentle humor to win the day and doesn't back off when things get tough. Well, I said it better than that. I said it on March 19, 2005. Johnny be good. Say it ever so slowly. Never say it with a zero. You put a zero in 10.5. So I wrote a compliment. April 30, 2005. Johnny's been good. Remember I said Johnny be good? Now Supervisors, the CEO has produced the goods. Maybe you forgot, maybe acted too fast. 10.5 has a zero in contrast. I wrote, say it ever so slowly. Never say it with a zero. 1.05 is bad. Your CEO has the skills to make many glad. 11% removes doubt, you know, he made Totten and Brooks pout. Two ones together are 11. No Z-ros. And the library's microfilm hails him hero. Say it ever so slowly. C-E-O. Five lucky Supervisors, Totten and Brooks batting zero. Don't put him in that category. They did a deposition on him, and the deposition was tried to prove that he wasn't qualified to be your CEO. I don't know if you've read his deposition, but that was a low blow. Okay, I'd like to shift some gears. Ventura County has been chosen to do mail-in ballots. It says it's the largest -- Ventura would be the largest of the seven counties included in this pilot program. I want to warn you against this and the falsity of it. Your Elections Division said we'd like to try it. Listen to this. I'm quoting, "Our only concern would be that there would be safeguards to ensure against vote fraud," said Karen Henaretti. I heard this board discuss voter fraud when your elected Division officer sat here and you told him about the system, about the fraud in it. Now get this. Mail-in ballots, he noted, must be signed, and each signature is checked against that on the voter registration card to ensure its authenticity. Can you imagine taking 100,000 ballots and verifying each signature, and they're telling me that that's going to be cheaper? Holy moly! What's wrong with these people?
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'd like to invite up Irene King.
Irene King from Alson Oaks. Just a footnote to the previous speaker here. Now it's gone out of my head. Maybe I'll think of it later. Okay. I too am very concerned about the direction in which the Supervisors are moving as they contemplate the large 10.5 raise for the CEO. This on the heels of a 30% cost of living raise plus an added 6% to try to match other managers' salaries. How can this be justified with a clear conscience? Just because the county is entering the next fiscal year without a financial crisis does not justify the size of the raise. And even given before the end of Mr. Johnston's contract, the right way to use that money would be to hire back the 125 workers that were laid off last year, resulting in cut activities and some much-needed programs for the mentally ill. Some very talented and dedicated people were lost in that layoff. People who work closely with those in need. They should be replaced with any money now available. I'm losing my voice. I hope that you, if the board can, agree to be more moderate when making a decision this morning. There is a real need to filter down monies for staff that are directly involved with our clients. Also, I hope the Supervisors will keep their mission in mind to provide the very best possible care for the people in Ventura County who are desperately in need of health services, both mental and physical. Please, as I want this little note to be included, that this is not meant as an attack on Mr. Johnston. He obviously is doing a very good job. However, we must prioritize in deciding what is best, the best way to spend our monies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lou Matthews.
I'll be very brief. I too think that in all due respect to Mr. Johnston and the work that he does, that this is not really the time to give a raise really to him or to others. And he sounded pretty happy when I read in the newspaper about his job, and I thought, I don't think he's going to run away. Didn't sound like he would. So why not hold off until we're in better shape? Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes our public comment period at this time. I'll open it up for board comments, and let's start with Supervisor Flynn.
I submit the names here to the clerk to ask the board to adjourn in memory. That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks.
I too submit these names for the clerk and ask that we adjourn in memory of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Michaels. Supervisor Michaels.
Yes. Happily, the fourth district has no adjournments in memory. But I would at this time like to wish every mother a Happy Mother's Day, which is coming this Sunday. And I hope that everyone remembers their mother, their wife, even their sister, whomever is a mother and in your life. And certainly, I hope that every mother has a very relaxing Happy Mother's Day.
Supervisor Bennett, top that.
My mother's prettier than your mother. The, um, uh, thank you. First, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. The other two items that I just wanted to point out is that, for the benefit of the board and the public, today, Los Angeles City Council is considering trying to come up with a way to buy meds, prescription medicines, group-wise for everybody in Los Angeles. And I'm going to be investigating that, and if there's some way we can pull that off here in the county of Ventura, it's an issue that would want us to be able to take a look at. So I think it's something we should all watch and kind of see what the Los Angeles City Council does with this and where that potentially can go. I don't know what all the advantages and disadvantages may be, and there may be some potential pitfalls. But we have a broken healthcare system, as we've said many times here. It is dominated by the insurance companies and, to a large extent, by the pharmacy companies. And the winners are all the people that buy in large group discounts, and the losers are all the rest of us that don't get to. And if we can find a way to move into that group discount category for the citizens of Ventura County, we would be better off. The other thing, the other item I just wanted to mention is, it is always a delight to come in and see our supervisors with their hats on on various occasions. And one of these days Supervisor Flynn and I will come in with some joint hat thing. I suspect it'll be football helmets, but we will come up with our own response one of these days. Thank you.
Father's Day is coming in June.
You're welcome. That's true.
I too have a list to submit for adjournment memory and to certainly just speak to mothers that come in all sizes and shapes and relationships with surrogate mothers and foster mothers and mothers of communities in many respects. So just an honor certainly of those who give of their time and love to the community and all the different ways that mothers do and interact in relationships. So that's all I have as far as board comments, seeing no others at this time. We will move right into our agenda, and we thank you who came this morning to speak to the board under public comment. So now we will move to items that aren't time certain, and that will start with item twenty-six. Our assessor, Mr. Goodwin. Good morning and welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Honorable Chair, Honorable Members of the Board. Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you.
And I hope it's a good week for you as well, getting ready for Mother's Day. I'm Assessor Dan Goodwin, and the item twenty-six before you is similar to what, it's a matter that's similar to what we've considered in the past. I'd like to begin by thanking you for the support you've given the Assessor's Office over the six years that I've come, different budgets, different board members, but some of you have been here all of my six years. I believe it's been really a fruitful arrangement. The Assessor's role has transitioned from about forty-seven billion to this year, it'll seem to be somewhere in the mid-eighty billions by the time we close the role. So there's been a lot of activity in Ventura County during this period of time, and a lot of it's been recorded on the Assessor's role. This particular program, or this item really is in compliance with the board's direction to consider versus ratify grants and applications. I've heard you clearly mention that and wanted to present, in case there were any questions or some things that need to be cleared up, the, if this item is approved by your board and at least the concept that you'd like to support it, then I'll go forward with the I recommend it as a funding option for the Assessor's Office. It's among the components of general fund and fees that are paid by special districts and cities. This amounts to about a million and a half dollars that the state is budgeted to make available to our county. Each county has a designated amount according to the, by state law, the amounts determined. If you have any questions, please, I'd be glad to answer them.
No questions.
Ask one. Can you just give us an idea how this will impact what you do?
This, um, this amounts to about a thirteen percent share of our budget. The state, part of the grant, what the state wants to see is production expectations, which unfortunately for me, our staff is very productive. We are, and we have had a pattern of quantities of production that had been started by some of my predecessors, and we've been able to continue. So put us in a good position to establish for the state what were our production expectations and application of the grant. And then they, they look at it, an analysis that's provided by the auditor, controller, who reviews our work, our claims for production, our claims for results, and then provides a letter with their conclusion about those claims. And if everything's satisfied, then the state is pleased and they make available to do the grant the following year. I do remember a question that came up last time about assessors trying to increase the grant amount, which we certainly had an interest, but actually, the battle this year has been to overcome a proposed reduction by the governor. The governor had proposed a slash of about five point seven million from the program, which, the last word I heard from the assessor in L.A. County was a committee, a budget committee, who's reviewing that, had voted to put that back in, and I guess going to work with somebody to do it. But the, as you know, in Sacramento, the battle right now is, as much as anything, is maintaining Sacramento support. Hopefully, we'll have a day when it goes the other way. But as, you know, as I mentioned, the role changing here, you know, the state has benefited substantially over these last five, six years from property taxes as a support for schools and relieving them of the obligation to fund schools. This is a phenomenon that has been enjoyed throughout the state.
Let me just ask one point. Your goal is to have an equalized role, right?
Exactly. I want to treat all the taxpayers as equal as possible.
And how close do you think you are to that? I know it's a tough question.
Well, I'm not sure I'm understanding your question that well.
Okay. Well, properties that are, where there's a turnover of a property, how quickly can you get to that issue? An equalized role means that you're treating every taxpayer equally.
Well, we've, we have a very systematic.
And there are rules and regulations that interfere with that to some extent, but you still have to follow them, and it still has, you still have that responsibility for an equalized role.
And I think our staff does a very good job of it. Maybe to sum it up, I think we do a very good job of it. There are, you know, mass appraisal techniques that have to be applied to deal with a very large assignment. And that's what I say about quotas and expectations. There are, in effect, you know, there are expectations each person has to produce, and they have, the clock is our, you know, we all have deadlines. We have deadlines to get it all done.
We have a tough job. I think, just my experience on the, on the Board of Equalization, as I like to call it, I think, I think your staff does an excellent job.
Thank you. I know that.
But that is the goal, right? Equalized.
Absolutely. The goal, you know, we are, we are not revenue agents. Although our, the result of our work is revenue for you, my job is to make sure every taxpayer is treated fairly and that the assessments are as accurate as possible. And that's both the benefit to the stakeholders that have a claim to part of the revenue and the taxpayers who are being, going to be charged taxes based on their assessments. So, you know, it's, there's a whole lot of various points of view that look to us to establish an equalized role and to perform. And I, you know, I'm thrilled with the staff I have. They work very hard. This year, even though we took an eleven percent reduction in positions, we're only five percent behind in our, in our production schedule for the year. So, you know, things are moving well. Thank you.
Other questions?
Move approval.
So motion?
Second.
And a second for approval? Any objection to that motion? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you, and thank you for your good work and your staff. Appreciate it. Item twenty-seven is a county executive officer item regarding the Ventura County Transportation Commission appointments. And good morning, Ms. Tompkins.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members, Ms. Robinson, Del Tompkins from the County Executive Office. The item before you this morning is a result of the board's direction to the CEO to conduct a recruitment for a citizen representative to the Ventura County Transportation Commission as well as citizen representatives for the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee. At that time, the board approved using a previously established recruitment and evaluation process for VCTC appointments. This resulted in eleven applicants shown in Attachment A, some very well-qualified people with good backgrounds. We had three of these individuals also indicating an interest in the advisory committee. The applications and supplemental questionnaires were provided along with the evaluation form to county management staff for review and evaluation. This included your Public Works Agency Director, staff in the Resource Management Agency, and also the CEO's office. That information, along with each of the applications and supplemental questionnaires, was provided to the board's selection subcommittee made up of the Chair and the Vice Chair. That resulted in the recommendations before you today to appoint Keith Turner as the citizen representative to VCTC, Mr. Wyerwick and Mr. White to the advisory committee as regular citizen representatives, and Mr. Shaw as the alternate. As your board is aware, there's no longer an alternate regular member, citizen member for VCTC. That alternate was eliminated because of state legislation that was passed last year. If there are any questions of either staff or your selection subcommittee, we're available.
Other questions? Supervisor Flynn.
So you've taken this application evaluation form and scored each applicant?
Correct. The management staff from Public Works, Resource Management and CEO independently scored all eleven applicants, and then that information was transmitted to the Chair and Vice Chair.
The Chair and Vice Chair of this board?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. And why didn't we all get that one?
Because they're the committee.
Did you get it?
They do have, they did receive that information, the Chair and Vice Chair.
No, he's asking why all the board members didn't. But we opted last year, or whenever it was, to go back to the, the subcommittee that would review, and that's the Chair and Vice Chair of the board. So that's why we didn't get them till after that.
Other questions?
Move approval?
So motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered. And thank you for your work, and thank you for the committee work that actually moved this quickly. It didn't take near as long as last time, having a process in place helped. Thank you so much.
And thanks to the subcommittee.
Correct.
Who did the hard work.
That's who I meant. Okay. Item twenty-eight is going to follow twenty-three, so we'll move to item twenty-nine, which is approval of amended employment contract between the County of Ventura and John F. Johnston. And good morning, Ms. Jurnay.
Good morning. Barbara Jurnay, Director of Human Resources, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. The item before you today recommends that an amended employee contract be approved for the current CEO, John Johnston, as well as adoption of an amendment to his salary via a resolution that is attached. The current contract for Mr. Johnston had one year left in it, but we are recommending that it be extended three years beyond that to March thirty-first, two thousand and nine. We're also recommending that he receive a ten and a half percent base salary increase as well as increasing his auto allowance from three seventy-five to six hundred initially. In addition, we're recommending that Mr. Johnston receive a five percent direct 401K contribution. That's effective March twenty-sixth, two thousand and six. I want to make sure that's clear in the board letter. It is correct in the contract. A copy of the amended contract as well as the resolution is attached, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Hearing no questions? Okay. Comments?
No.
Okay.
Just a quick comment, and I won't put the motion on until John's spoken, but I understand the concerns that were voiced this morning. However, when you have valued employees, and that's throughout the organization, and our employees have gotten, you know, raises through new contracts and management, trying to keep up and trying to keep good people, and there's, it would always be easy to say, well, things are a little tough, there's no raises. And I don't believe in that. I believe that if we are going to run this corporation for the taxpayers at a value of over a billion dollars, that we have to have good people. Would he have run away? I don't know. But the salaries that we pay to our top managers are critical to the operation of this organization, because if we don't have good people at the top, there's going to be a tremendous waste of taxpayer dollars in the end. And so while I respect the comments that were made, I disagree with them and would be happy to put the motion on the floor, but I understand Supervisor Flynn has a concern. Do you want me to hold the motion?
My concern is the, the increase in the automobile allowance. That seems like a, to me, like a spike. I know that gasoline costs much more than it did, but we need to think about what the people in the county system who have a car, what they receive for the operation of that car. And it seems to me this is out of order here.
Well, the management, appointed top management receives the three hundred and seventy-five dollars per month for the auto allowance. In our review of automobile allowances throughout the other counties as well as in some of the local private industry areas, we find that it varies greatly, that probably three seventy-five is on the low side.
Other comments or questions? Supervisor Parks.
I think Johnny Johnston is the best administrator I have ever met or worked with, and I think he is the greatest, and I think we are really fortunate to have him. But through the last couple of years, we have not been granting full raises even to the value of the individuals that are directors and heads of our departments. And with that, I have, I have a concern of the perception of a ten and a half percent raise, and I would look at something lesser. That'd be seven percent or eight percent.
Other comments? Board members? Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. I think there's a problem in this country when we have CEOs of these big firms making, you know, a hundred and eighty million dollars a year and truly obscene salaries, where it's just completely out of, out of line in terms of justifying that there's, that that value is there. And I try to contrast that to, there are companies with eight thousand employees that are paying their CEO an awful lot more than, than what we are contemplating here for Mr. Johnson in terms of paying him. I'd like to point out for the pub, for the public as much as anybody else, that when we hired Mr. Johnson, we brought him in way below the market-based average for CEOs. I mean way below the market-based average for CEOs. You go back and look at what Mr. Hufford was making when, when he left and what Mr. Johnson was making when he came in, it is substantial, the difference between those. Then, completely unnoticed by the press or anybody else, Mr. Johnson went two years with no raise at all. He didn't bring the issue up, nobody brought the issue up. That's two years he went with no raise. That's two years he went with no raise. There was no press about it, no headlines. CEO goes without raise again this year. He did that two years in a row, quietly. I have a great deal of respect for that. It is no, we were in tough times, he wasn't leaning on us. Last fall, we did the market-based adjustments for people, but we capped that market-based adjustment so that when you get, combined it, we capped it, we just put an artificial cap on it. We said, "It doesn't matter how much you're supposed to get, but given the 3 percent raise, we were only going to give another 6 percent. We were only going to go to 9 percent" last fall. So, we did not adjust Mr. Johnson to the market-based average last fall, and so he still remained substantially below comparable CEOs in, in California of counties of this size. We have 8,000 employees here in the County of Ventura. Our CEO, managing that, managing a $1.3 billion budget, has paid less than the city manager of Thousand Oaks with this raise, right? I would point out, with this raise, still paid less. So, now, what we have is a situation where Mr. Johnson's contract is getting ready to expire. I think every, I, I don't hear people saying that he hasn't done a good job. I think there are a lot of people saying he's done a, a truly excellent job of doing exactly what the Board said, which is restore people's trust in county government, bring fiscal stability and common sense and a sustainable budget to county government. Now, if anybody thinks either of those things is an easy thing to accomplish, or was an easy thing to accomplish four years ago when we laid it out, given all of the pressure, given all of the odd contracts we had that had formulas that fixed in and didn't give you any options, and patiently, tenaciously, and with, with great skill, Mr. Johnson worked through, built a team, worked through, and was able to accomplish every one of those goals that we've set out for him, to now say, and then, then finally, one of those goals was, we did bring virtually every other employee in this organization, has been brought up to market-based average over this four-year period of time. We've got one left, right? The CEO, and we're, but he's the easiest target, and it's the easiest thing for me to do politically right now, is to say, "Oh, boy, we're gonna," you know? And I just think that, that we'd be penny wise and pound foolish in this situation, because if we can keep Mr. Johnson here for three or four more years, we have an opportunity to consolidate a tremendous paradigm shift that has taken place here in county government. And that paradigm shift is to move us to truly sustainable budgets, move us away from the concept of deficit spending, of fixed formulas. But he has accomplished a great deal, but I would offer that we need three or four more years to consolidate those gains. And when you think of just one decision, one proper decision that, you know, one, one skillful negotiation is worth millions in terms of how, how he's done that. If we can get him to stay here that long and consolidate these gains, we will be giving the citizens of Ventura County something that very few counties are giving their citizens in California, and that is truly stable, fiscally responsible budgeting at the county level. Alls you have to do is open up the newspaper, and the Los Angeles Times has done a number of articles of counties that have given away the store in all kinds of, of ways, and their citizens will be worse off for it 10 years from now. They'll have worse public safety, they'll have worse public health programs, they'll have, they'll have a worse safety net, and that will cost them in all kinds of ways in terms of, of their quality of life. So, we're trying to bring our CEO to, we're trying to treat him the same way we've treated all of the other, the same way he's treated all of the other employees in this organization. The only people that can do it are us. We have to take the political heat to get there. There would not have been a need for a 10.5 percent increase right now if we would have those two years when we were here, that he got no raise, if we would've said, "Hey, no, we should give him a raise." We were giving raises to all kinds of other people, public safety employees, SEIU employees, everybody was getting raises. We didn't, and if we wanted to not have this, we should've done that. But instead, I think we asked, I think we allowed him, because he didn't bring it up, we didn't bring it, we allowed him to lead by example, and now it's time for us, I think, to, to definitely demonstrate that, and I think the value that we get out of that is enormous for the citizens of Ventura County if we can get him to stay for the three or four more years. Thank you. So, I will certainly be supporting the salary increase if those comments didn't make that clear.
Other comments?
Let me just make the comment on the one that, issue that I raised, and that's the mileage, or, excuse me, the car allowance. I just think we need a standard there, and this, this doesn't do it for me. So, I would be in favor of keeping that at $375. That probably would meet the standard that we've given to other employees, and, and this is out of line. But the salary issue, I, I would support that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just, I respectfully disagree with my colleague, Supervisor Flynn. I do not believe that it is out of line, and considering the total compensation package, the value of the employee, I think to be arguing over 200 and some odd dollars is probably not productive. As staff has stated, it's probably on the low side of most compensations around the county. And quite frankly, and I don't want to hurt anyone's feelings with this, Mr. Johnson is not just one of the employees. Mr. Johnson is the big kahuna. He'd be the boss. And there has to be some privileges that come for the hard work, the stress, and the emotions that come with running this corporation in a very, very public light, that other CEOs don't ever have to suffer unless they do something illegal, and then they really suffer. But considering that most CEOs run their organizations not under the microscope of the citizens and the press, and there's nothing wrong with, with us being open, we've always been very open, but I would, I would like to reiterate that I do not believe that Mr. Johnson is just one of the employees, A, and B, that any of this is out of line, considering the quality of the services he has rendered to us over the years for his compensation, and that which I look forward to him rendering for the next few years. The other issue that I think we need to deal with, and perhaps bring voice to at this time, is succession planning. If Mr. Johnson were to walk out the door in a year, are we ready? Is there anybody ready? How are the rest of our departments and agencies doing, planning for this graying population? I mean, there's going to be a whole bunch of us that are going to walk out the door at the same time. Is that going to cause a problem for the corporation of the citizens of Ventura County? So, I think it's critical right now that we do the right thing, which I consider this to be the right thing. And Supervisor Flynn, I, I really honestly do not believe that the car allowance is excessive, especially in consideration that Mr. Johnson usually takes a car instead, and he takes a hybrid, which is the county policy. So, I would make the motion, if I haven't already, I've forgotten, I've lost track. I would make the motion that we approve the recommended actions.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Do you have a question, Ms. Cohen?
Madam Chair, just in the interest of full disclosure, the 5 percent of 401K direct deferred compensation contribution will be subject to amending the deferred comp plan documents. We have time to do that before the effective date in '06.
Right.
I'd just make a comment.
Okay.
With your permission. I just think that using the car allowance to increase the pay is not a, is not a valid reason. If we want to increase the pay from what is being recommended, let's do that. But the, the car allowance has to have some kind of equality to it, and this violates that, as far as I'm concerned. As far as Mr. Johnson is concerned, I agree with you, with the comments that you've made. But I don't think Mr. Johnson is the kind that says, "If you don't give me a raise, I'm walking out the door." He's not that kind of a person. Money, I don't think motivates Mr. Johnson at all. I think that he, whether we approve this or not, he would continue to do the excellent work that he's doing. So, I'm not concerned about a person walking out of the door, out the door. He certainly has done a superb job. There's no question in my mind about that. Even though I disagree with, I guess, at least three of you on, on the harbor issues, I, I think he needs to put more into that, and that's not doing what needs to be, he's not doing what needs to be done there. But overall, I agree with you, and I know you disagree with me about the harbor. I'm not trying to start a little fight here. I just don't like to fight, and you all know that. But a superb individual, that's what we have.
And if I may comment, he is, like I said, the best that I have ever come across, and I think we're very fortunate to have him, and one, one of those benefits is, he isn't the type of person to say, you know, to hold us hostage with, "Give us more money, or I'm, or I'm walking." So, he is a, truly a treasure. I would just like to see this stepped. I do think we do need to get him up to the, the pay scale that CEOs on other counties have, but to jump in all at once, and it's our own fault to a degree if we did, didn't support his raise, or didn't move forward with a raise for him over the last couple of years. But I think we, it is a several-year contract, and we can step it up so it isn't the, the large jump that we haven't been able to provide for others in our county family, other Directors of agencies, precisely because we've been holding those down because of the economy. So, hopefully, he'll still appreciate me as I appreciate him and, and understand, and I think part of who Johnny is, does understand where I'm coming from on this, and I, so I can't support the motion unless we move to step it to the full amount by the third or fourth year of the contract.
Well, I support the motion. I was tasked by the Board to sit down with Mr. Johnson and talk about the compensation package, and as I did review the market-based in other counties, and, and we, you know, even looking at private sector, one of the things we're challenged with all the time is operate the county like a business. Well, if we did that with this position, it would certainly be a considerable more dollar compensation to Mr. Johnson, his work in overseeing a billion-dollar budget and the 8,000 employees and the management structure we have in this county, and five elected office holders, which, well, 11 totally, that's correct, particularly in the budget and appropriation side of it. In looking at San Diego, Riverside, Contra Costa, San Bernardino, Alameda, and Orange County, all of those CEOs are above, after this is acted on today, would still be above what Mr. Johnson is receiving. And all of those counties are facing significant financial challenges that we have been able over the last three years with Mr. Johnson's guidance and steady hand and, and building trust in the organization, to work our way through so that we don't have a structural deficit that we're confronted with this year. And that has allowed us to, to, one, get this organization upright and on a steady course, and allowed us to have the ability to talk about the needs for our county family and our Behavioral Health Department, and how we can make sure that we're still providing a level of service that keeps us steady, may not grow us, may not replace positions, but will keep us steady and keep us healthy until all of the things at the state level turn around. Frankly, that are the ones that are direct impact on us. I think that this Board is at fault for not dealing with Mr. Johnson's compensation in the two years, that, that we just didn't look closely at his compensation. We gave him recently an evaluation that was a five-star evaluation, and I think when you, when you do that with someone who is of, and Mr. Johnson won't, doesn't need to hear this, his age, but, that talks about the pressures and the work and the workload and the hours he puts into this job, then you have to also look at respecting that by way of compensation. Yes, he does this because he believes in public service, he believes in, in local government, but he, like the rest of us, also have, has to be looking at his retirement and his being compensated and respected as all managers and employees do through what they are provided via wages and compensation packages. I believe this Board struggled a few years back on the whole issue of car allowance and gas reimbursements, and there was some disagreement as to which one should be eliminated and/or which one do you consider to be a compensation package or a part of, of working in a, in a county agency and, and doing the business of the county. And I, I don't agree with respectfully Supervisor Flynn, the, the position on that one. I think that Mr. Johnson demonstrates well above, well, what he does in managing the county employees and the management structure just warrants every bit of what we're proposing here today. I think we are confronted with retirement and succession, and I think that Mr. Johnson always had that choice to look at retirement in a year. And in fact, I believe in our discussions with him on the evaluation was that we really wanted him to stay with us and not look at what would really be the, perhaps what everyone else would do at his age and his accomplishments, which his accomplishments have been so numerous, would be to look at retirement. But we said, "Stay with us, we're not ready for you to leave this organization yet. We need to do further succession planning and mentoring and growing our own leadership." Because the market is going to be very competitive out there when this position opens up, competitive in the sense of who's going to be available and how we would, would we either attract them to this county with the additional cost of living issues we have in this county, and/or to respect those who are part of the team that Mr. Johnson is, is helping us to grow inside the county. And you respect people by giving them quality, fair compensation, and acknowledging their good work. So, I support the motion. So, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Bennett?
Could you just read, could you just read those counties again where the executives are going to still be paid more than Mr. Johnson and that are having trouble?
San Diego, we know what condition they're in. Riverside, Contra Costa, in the same condition. San Bernardino, where in fact they had some criminal actions on their top management. Alameda County and Orange County.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and objection to that motion?
I'm going to object based on what I identified as the issue, and it's not, I'm not politically motivated on this, it's just a matter of some kind of a standard here in what is allowed for car allowance.
I'll object, because I think it should be stepped up to the, so that he gets the pay that is comparable. And I, I just also wanted to state that the way state laws are, we can't discuss the evaluation of the CEO in public, but we have to discuss the salary. So, we, it seems kind of messy up here, and, but I, I almost wish it were flip-flopped for this instance, because as you mentioned, it was a complete five-star rating. We have an exceptional individual here, and I know that we all support him fully.
Supervisor Bennett?
I want to be clear, I, I don't wish it was flip-flopped, because I think we definitely, you know, I, I think we definitely want to talk about the salary stuff out, out in public, so I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want that to be in closed session. I wouldn't want to create the impression that we would want to do that in closed session.
I guess I meant that primarily because what we said in that closed session regarding our appreciation of Johnny is something that is deserving to be out here in the open, and then also kind of the, you know, it's like watching sausage being made, democracy, but just kind of seeing some give and take here, which, and, and getting the opinions on, on how the salary goes. Isn't pretty, but it, you're right, it is something for the public.
Mr. Flynn?
I agree with all the comments made about Mr. Johnson. I made them too. And even though I'm voting against him on the, the proposal, the recommendation, I still consider him a very superb manager, and he is, I repeat, a very lovable human being. It's hard not to like Johnny Johnston.
Supervisor Michaels?
Well, actions speak much louder than words, and I think that it's terribly unfortunate to send this kind of message to someone who has done this kind of work, and believe me, a divided Board- has done this kind of work, and believe me, a divided board on a compensation package after what was a glowing, I can say that much, a glowing review of his performance, I think is extremely sad. When you're talking about the compensation package, when you're talking about the total value of compensation to our employees, when you're talking about our budget, you're being penny wise and pound foolish, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm really very sorry, I don't say this with a lack of respect, but it's something I have to say, I feel very sorry that we're not acting as we are speaking on behalf of Mr. Johnson.
Motion passes three to two. Thank you, Ms. Renee. We've got a minute here to take. We just have one district attorney item, so why don't we have Mr. Chambers come in and take care of that before we go to our time certain items? And it is item 20, item 30, item 30. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Long, board members. Mel Chambers with the DA's office. This item before you today is authorization to apply for a grant with the Office of Emergency Services, State of California, for a victim witness assistance grant, approximately $389,000. Funds six positions that provide the services in discussed in the board letter. I'm here to answer any questions.
At this time?
Questions?
Second.
Motion and a second, and objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Chambers.
Thank you.
You do good work in looking for those.
Okay, board, we have a 9:30. Shall we take just a quick break here, and then we'll go to our first 9:30 time certain, item 14?
How quickly can we break?
No, you got three minutes.
From as far away as Alaska and as close as Hemet, California. The church now has a new 3,400 square foot preschool addition containing two classrooms. We've got some office and kitchen and other larger areas for meeting. And the capacity of the preschool, which has always had a waiting list, will now double from 30 to 60 students. And I think that's wonderful, and all done with volunteer work. This resolution by the Board of Supervisors mentions their beginnings and states that the Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the residents of Ventura County, does hereby recognize the dedication and leadership of the clergy and congregation of King of Glory Lutheran Church in their successful efforts to meet the spiritual and practical needs of their fellow human beings, and further does extend congratulations on the occasion of their 40th anniversary. And I'll come down there and present this to you. And if the pastor would like to make some comments, I'll come on down and present this.
Okay.
Congratulations. I mean, in visiting. Senior new facility.
I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing us. Some of us are older than the congregations we serve. But 40 years is a long time. A lot has changed in Newberry Park, Thousand Oaks during that time. As a matter of fact, we happen to be the same age as Thousand Oaks. They've gotten a bit larger than we have, and we've tried to respond to the changes as they've come down the pike. Community continues to change, and it's our privilege to, through our preschool and through our church's ministry, to contribute something to the quality of life and what makes Ventura County such a special place in which to live. So, once again, thank you very much, and we hope to continue to make a positive contribution to our local community and to the community at large. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next item would be a presentation proclaiming May 2005 as Older Americans Month. And I believe in our audience, we have Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council members, Don Hunt, the Chair, if you'd like to step forward, Arnold Robles, Vice Chair, if you're able to join us this morning, Ben Guerrero, the Secretary, if you're able to join us. Inviting these three up, they've been so instrumental in what has been a smooth transition of our senior nutrition program. And I'd like to just take a moment to note some of the highlights of the Older Americans Month that will be proclaimed this morning, which is May 2005, as we all look at ourselves and acknowledge we are older Americans. But Ventura County is fortunate because we are home to more than 110,000 citizens aged 60 years or older, and they are representative of an unprecedented trend in our nation's demographic makeup, where older persons are as citizens and community members should be allowed to certainly live in lives of dignity and independence, free from fears, myths, and misconceptions about aging. And as Americans grow older, each community must strive to understand and address the evolving challenges and needs of our older citizens and the people who care for them. Our society is dependent upon the nurturing, support, and the resources that are shared between generations, and benefit from our mutual efforts to meet the needs of America's older persons and those who love them. So it's really a delight to present this on behalf of the Board today, declaring the month of May as Older American Month, urging our residents in our county to join with the Area Agency on Aging, and good to see you here this morning, recognizing our older citizens, celebrating their many contributions, and assisting them in meeting their needs with both dignity and compassion. And I'd like to step down and present this, and if you'd like to say a few words, please. Look at one, now, come on.
Seniors always like to say a few words. We'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for their support of our senior community throughout the year. We appreciated the assistance with the senior nutrition program. Obviously, there are many things that affect the senior community that are current at the federal and the state level, with social security, Medicare changes, those types of things. So we hope that we're a segment of your community that can appear before you and talk about senior issues, and we look forward to your support in the future. And thank you for this resolution.
Take a quick picture. Turn around. Hold this up here, like this. Okay, scooch in, scooch in. A little closer up here. There we go.
You've done this before.
I have. Got it? Thank you so much. Appreciate your good work.
I noticed that Carol Dean left before I could say Carol Dean, and I will be joining that group within this month and next month, and I was gonna chide him for it, so I'll have to wait until he comes back next time and get him.
What is that? Magical number?
You're gonna join me?
Yeah, we are. I'm a little behind you, but we're gonna join you.
I remember when I turned, in my 50s at some time, I went to Carl Junior's, and I felt like a pretty young guy, and the clerk that waited on me said, "Do you want a senior discount?"
Moving on. It was a pleasure to present and invite up to our podium, please. We have Honorable Judge Brian Back, Honorable Judge Charles Campbell, Superior Court Executive Officer Michael Planet, and I see our Honorable Cal Remington. Please step forward as we take an opportunity now to acknowledge May 2005 as National Drug Court Month. And this is the team that makes it happen. And the mission of our drug courts is to stop the abuse of alcohol and other drugs and related criminal activity, and to use the drug court to offer compelling choice for individuals whose criminal justice involvement stems from alcohol and other drug use. Our drug court programs combine intensive judicial supervision, mandatory substance abuse treatment and drug testing, escalating sanctions, and incentives in order to break the cycle of drug addiction and its concomitant crime in our communities. Our judges, our prosecutors, defense attorneys, social workers, treatment and rehabilitation professionals, law enforcement, correction personnel, researchers, educators, national community leaders, and others are dedicated to a movement that has had a profound impact through hard work and commitment to our communities. The recidivism rate for participants who have been terminated from drug court is twice as high as those who have graduated from drug court. So the success is, we're able to substantiate the success and the reduction in the amount of the incarceration days that are avoided, and that helps us in all the work we do with the other services in our community. This couldn't be done just at the bench alone and just with the support of our wonderful leadership of the judges and our corrections folks and others. It is also done with our community-based treatment providers, Action Family Counseling Services, Prototypes Women's Center, Casa Latina, Miracles for Moms. They have provided services to more than 450 juveniles and mothers referred by the drug court programs. Other groups that have worked with the drug court in handling referrals and support, City Impact Counseling Services, Boys and Girls Clubs, Police Activity League, Cal Works Job Career Centers, Public Health, Ventura County Medical Center, our Rape and Trauma Centers, Planned Parenthood Interface, our recreational support leagues, our Free Legal Clinics, and Salvation Army. And these have all helped us to provide positive outcomes that have improved our GPAs, increased school attendance, helping folks obtain employment, and to take the drug court as a model for reducing recidivism and changing lives for the better. So it's truly a pleasure to present this this month. There are significant challenges in front of us for our drug court, and they are challenges that, as always, get down to money and are challenged by the state's fiscal conditions. And being a believer, as all of us in this board, that local solutions come from community working together to develop those solutions, and so support a drug court that has remarkable performance really does make a difference in our community and the impacts that they're able to create by just giving an additional guidance and an additional hand to folks who are struggling with the diseases of alcohol and drug abuse. It's the leadership at the drug court that we're seeing a difference. So I'd like to step down and present this, but invite you to please comment. Judge Back, Judge Campbell, don't be shy.
Chuck's pretty shy. And we were joined by Judge Smiley, our presiding judge of the Superior Court. It's, those are wonderful words to hear. The nice thing about these drug court programs is everybody can anecdotally find good stories to tell, how things go well, but statistics really firm up that these programs work so well. And it's, it is collaboration at its best. When you walk into the drug court team, you're not quite sure who's sitting in which chair because everybody is obviously there for the benefit of the, not just the kids, but the families. And we have some additional folks here today. We have, sitting in the back, we have Jill Barrios, who is the coordinator for both of our drug court programs. And sitting with Jill is Paul Boujol, who assists Jill and also works magic to the extent that we can with those funding mechanisms. And our remaining original member of the Juvenile Delinquency Drug Court, which was formulated under the guidance of Judge Perrin back in mid-99, that's Tanya. Tanya White, have a seat, have a stand, who's with the Alcohol and Drug Program, Behavioral We're trying to perfect the cloning mechanism so we can get more of her because she is so critical. And we have some people who have joined us from our programs. If they'd stand up, they were kinda nervous about addressing the, Grandma? About addressing the Board of Supervisors, but they wanted to be here to show their support because those who benefit from the program are, we just celebrated Older Americans Month also, and we want these kids in drug court to get to the point of Older Americans. And in addition to working on the substance abuse issues, we're able to work on all those other things which are important, the things that really build up the appropriate responsibility of these kids in the community, and they understand the role of the community. We're very proud of the kids in our delinquency court, and we're equally as proud of the dependency court. Chuck said he only had an hour and a half.
Supervisor Long almost fainted there. No, I'm gonna be very brief. I just wanna thank the Board. They've supported us throughout from the time we started this with wholehearted support and actually enthusiasm. And I just wanna remind you that in dependency drug court, the fact that that program exists, I think, makes a difference as to whether or not a newborn infant is gonna grow up with the mother and the father who actually created that child or in some other home. Without that program, the chances of that family reuniting, given those problems, are really remote. But with dependency drug court, our reunification rate is very good, and that's because of the collaboration of all the people involved. So it makes a substantial difference, because I think we'd all agree, all things being equal, it's better to grow up in your biological family than somewhere else. So on behalf of all those families, I wanna thank you very much for your support.
And Chuck and I both realize that before day one, we have had the support of each one of the Board members. Your support of this is just, it's so appreciated. It's just another example of why this is a wonderful county in which to reside. You know, people get along here, and they understand the issues out there, and everybody's working towards a common goal, so your support is very, very much appreciated. And I have some, you've got a resolution, I've got some invitations. Thank you, yeah. Thank you very much. These are invitations to, you know, every month, or excuse me, every May, we have a joint celebration of the delinquency and the dependency drug courts. And this year is going to be on May 25th at 3:00 in Courtroom 22. We'll have a joint celebration and graduation of both courts. And I even brought enough for Noel. Just in case you need legal assistance while you're there. But did anybody else wish to make any comments?
And that simply is that we come into these chambers from time to time, and it is always so gratifying for us that we continue to share in a partnership with the county and with the Board on a variety of different levels, in a variety of different circumstances. And it's just our pleasure, it's the court's pleasure, to have the Board and to have the staff of the county who so continuously support us across the board in all of our endeavors, and we appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I could just, Judge Back and Judge Campbell, you know, tremendous skills as judges, but I would just like to point out the role you have played in communicating the value of drug court and communicating how we need this team to address and how serious this whole problem of drug abuse is here in the county. And so you're great spokespersons. I've been tremendously educated over the four years I've been here as a result of your steady efforts in this, and I just wanna compliment you for that. So thank you.
And Madam Chair, I thank Judge Smiley for his comments, but I think it's a mutual partnership, and I think the Board, and I know I speak for myself at least, that we are very proud of the bench in this county and the relationship that we do have. It's not that way when I talk to a lot of my colleagues up and down the state, so thank you. I'm very grateful for the relationship that we have and that we have been able to work together over the years and look forward to lots more good things.
I also just wanted to compliment you that I was able to take a little look at the Adelante portion of the court, where they work with children or youth who have some behaviorally, physical problems, and also problems with the criminal justice system. And it's just wonderful. I really realized how it's, you're dealing with one human being at a time and how important that is, and the wonderful partnership with probation and behavioral health, District Attorney, and working together to try to help these people. And also want to mention that Cal Johnson is even a more honorable. Cal Johnson has recently been appointed to a State Commission, which I want to congratulate you on. And then also the wonderful work of Judge Campbell in working to really understand and help these mothers who are addicted and realizing the devastating consequences to the children and working to help solve those problems. And it's just, it really is kind of the Lord's work, and I think that you're doing, and have tremendous respect for the courts. And it is certainly a partnership, and it really shows what good teamwork can do, so I just wanna congratulate you all.
I'd just like to make, Madam Chair, with your permission, a couple of comments. The other day, I met with a district attorney, deputy district attorney, and a public defender, and we had lunch, and they had high praise for what is happening out there on Vineyard in my district, by the way, El Rio. I've always thought Judge Back does such a great job and is such a great leader in this. And Judge Campbell, your words this morning really represent, to me at least, a part of the mission statement of this, of this court, this drug court. And I would hope that somehow we could get your words exactly as you said them before the public because it's such a good lesson for all of us. Thank you very much. I won't mention that the two I met with for lunch said, "We need bus service out there."
Hey, and we're really proud of these girls back there, so, thank you.
All right, Board members, thank you so much. We'll move ahead on our next item, which is Military Appreciation Month. Supervisor Michaels.
Yes, thank you very much. It is our honor to honor the military, and if this will work, we have a very short presentation that I think everyone will enjoy. I have been informed that it may not be functioning, so can we try, please? I think they're saying no.
I think she's trying to call you, Roberta.
She's trying to call you. This is great, 'cause we can see through the glass up here where the operators are running, and they're saying. She doesn't have it. Somebody is in deep smoke. Anyway, just be advised, and I certainly hope that the right people are listening, Jared. I'm just teasing. Get a grip, which I can do now. It's been, it's been eight weeks, but I now can move my hand. Anyway, I am sorry the presentation didn't work or didn't get here or whatever happened. It's merely a slideshow, maybe some of you have seen, that's been making the course in the emails with some very nice patriotic music and just marvelous, marvelous pictures of our men and women in uniform in Iraq, in Afghanistan, even some stateside of the reuniting families as the service person comes home and is met. There's a couple of ships, a couple of airplanes. It's really exciting. There's lots of Seabees, Captain Worshing. Well, hurrah. But unfortunately, it didn't work. So with that, I would like to read the resolution, but I would like to have Chief Master Sergeant Van Dyke, Captain Worshing, and maybe the person that is most the subject of what's happening today, come down to the podium while I read this, and then I'll bring it down and present. Captain Worshing, would you bring your lovely lady down here, please? Okay. We'll have a bet whether I can make this, make it through this thing. In honor of Military Appreciation Month, whereas in every time of conflict, this country has sent its military into harm's way, where our military men and women have always done their duty, and whereas the military member returns home from having possibly been gone for several years or on multiple deployments to a safe place that has not changed much because of someone who did their duty without medals or fanfare, the military spouse. The military spouse has the responsibilities of accountant, cook, gardener, bus driver, mechanic, plumber, electrician, soccer coach, banker, disciplinarian, mentor, doctor, nurse, and more duties as required, without letting the worry about the safety of their spouse affect the rest of the family. The military member who is sent into combat is usually a young person. Therefore, the responsibilities are new to the young spouse, and very rapid learning is required, especially where in children, where on-the-job training is required because the little critters don't come with instructions. Upon the return of the military member, the spouse has to cope with the personality changes that can occur in combat, and has to persevere for months and sometimes years waiting for the nightmares to go away. In any military conflict, there's a chance that the military member will not return. The military spouse must be prepared to carry on with all the family duties, and many do not allow themselves the time to grieve. Therefore, be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of May 05 Military Appreciation Month to honor those with the toughest job in the military, the military spouse. I'd like to come down, and if either of you would like to make a comment, I have, could make several comments, but we don't have enough time. We don't wanna go through the whole history of 40 years of being a military spouse, so I'll let the younger generation take over.
Good morning and welcome.
Oh. Do you mind standing in the audience for just a moment? Jared heard me.
Thank you, Jared. You were working on it with Jared. Okay, thanks to all of you. If we can run that real quick, it's just a couple minutes. I think the audience, and if you'd like to have a seat so you don't feel awkward standing there. I didn't mean to put you in that position. This I can't make without tears, but we'll try. Okay.
There we go.
This isn't the exciting part. If you can't get the sound, that's okay. The pictures are worth a million words. And they do have a sense of humor, by the way. Well, I noticed that there was more than one of us that didn't make it through that without tears. But at any rate, this is kind of a representation of the men and women that go in harm's way willingly. This is an all-volunteer service to protect each and every one of us and our rights in this country. And you saw a couple pictures of how happy the spouses are when that military member finally returns, and thank God they return. Some don't. But we have some wonderful people here that are going to accept the resolution, and I'm so pleased that Captain Worshing could bring our first military spouse of the Seabees. First Lady Militar, how do you say that? First Lady, first? Queen Bee! You got it, I forgot. Oh, bad me, I forgot, the Queen Bee of the Seabees from Naval Base Ventura County, and Captain Ron, Captain, I'm sorry, that was such a bad mistake. Captain Worshing, the King Bee, and Chief Master Sergeant Ron Van Dyke, if they would please come up, and I will present this to George, who's gonna, I don't know what we're gonna do, and George Compton, please, from our Human Services Agency, who is our Veterans Affairs Officer. Is that what you are, technically?
That's close enough. Supervisor Michaels, on behalf of those of us that are up here, we would like you to present the proclamation to a group of ladies that we have with us today that we feel probably deserve this more than anyone else. I'd like to introduce the Gold Star Wives. Would you please come up?
And welcome.
Supervisor Michaels, and to the rest of the Board, for those who may not be aware, Gold Star Wives are those whose husbands Gold Star Wives are those whose husbands did not make it home. Each one of us has our own story, and the young lady that had to take her little girl out is the wife of the pilot of the plane that crashed at Point Mugu Airshow a couple of years ago. Each and every one of us have felt that. Some of us, our husbands did return home only to pass away later at a veterans' hospital. And Memorial Day's coming up, and it's always a hard time for all of our ladies as we think back on what we have lost. Our financial, our spiritual, all the support that you could think of, and the father of our children. It is a difficult task when you have little ones such as Sylvia as, and many of us had when we lost our husbands. I had teenagers. Oh, what fun to finish raising teenagers by myself after my husband passed away. But we do want to thank you so very much for this proclamation.
And thank you. Tell us about Seabee days.
We're always thrilled to have our uniformed military and our, what we like to refer to as our best partners in the county in supporting the military, both the active-duty and the reservists who serve our country. Thank you to the Gold Star Moms for coming down, wives, I'm sorry, there's Moms and Wives. You're the wives, I apologize. But thank you for coming down and taking your time and helping us to honor not only yourselves, but all of the spouses of military, past and present. Thank you much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Our next presentation, Supervisor Flynn, for Veterans Appreciation Month.
Yes, thank you very much. Is Marjorie Berg present?
Yes.
Oh, if you'd come forward, please.
Oh, yes.
It's an honor for me to present this resolution recognizing Veterans Appreciation Month. And when you think of the veterans of all the conflicts and wars that people have been involved with in this country, the veterans really gave us something. In every conflict that we've had, in every war that we have, some gave up their lives, some of them are maimed forever. All you have to do is go to the Veterans Hospital in Los Angeles and see the people there who really struggle every day. I just wanted to share a little history, if you don't mind. Here's George.
Sure.
We've got the best veterans officer we've ever had right here. Do you agree? That's the first time I've had five votes, or four votes, in a long time. I remember in World War II, I was eight years old when the war started, and I wanted to tell just a little story. But first, talk about how everyone was mobilized. Everyone was involved in the war effort. But the people we honor, the veterans, they were there in the front protecting, protecting us. They gave the most, but we were all involved. In those days, Franklin Roosevelt had the fireside chats, and before each chat, the Star Spangled Banner played. My family lived way out in the country. There was no one to see us. We lived on a farm in Santa Barbara County. And people in those days all stood up when the Star Spangled Banner was played, remembering those who were on the front lines, remembering those who were in the war. It was something we did automatically. Patriotism was at its great high level in those days. I remember an incident which I wanted to share with you because it's a period of history. During one of Franklin Roosevelt's fireside chats, there was a Japanese submarine that came into the Santa Barbara Channel and fired off some rounds of ammunition, and it really scared the heck out of all of us because we lived near there. And as soon as that happened, and we gained our senses, and it happened right during a Roosevelt fireside chat, right in the middle of it, my brother said, I'll never forget this, grab your 22s. And we grabbed our 22s, and we went to the hills. And that actually happened in the year 1943. And the reason the Japanese submarine commander came ashore, according to historians, is that prior to the war, he was walking along a cliff, and it was in an oil field, and he fell on some cactus, and all the oil workers laughed, and he came back to get even. Now, that's reported in the history books. I wanted to give you that little bit of history as we recognize veterans and as we recognize the people in Iraq today who will be veterans, as we remember George and what he has done, and all the veterans. People in this country are very patriotic, they're very supportive. I wanted to give you that little bit of history. And with that, I would like to present this, Marjorie, this Recognizing Veterans Appreciation Month, May 2005, it's signed by all the board members.
Thank you. As a veteran, and as my coworker is also a veteran, this is what veterans look like. A lot of people think they're a little different, but this is what they look like. And every day, we work with over 126 a month of veterans who come into the Employment Development Department for help with job search, with career guidance, with things as small as resume search or computer skills, all of the things that they need to get back on their feet after having done what you've just seen out in the field. Now, they come back as civilians, and it is our job to find them jobs and to make sure that their families are supported and well taken care of. And we do that through a lot of organizations. George, of course, is a part of our heartbeat when we help our veterans. Thank you.
I just wanted to say to the board to thank you for giving us this recognition today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Our next item is 930, and it's a presentation by Supervisor Parks for Mental Health Month.
Thank you. I'm going to present this resolution on Mental Health Month, and I see Linda's here, and our NAMI representatives, maybe you'd all like to come on down, and I'll present this down there to you. And of course, our Mental Health Board representative.
We have one of the most active mental health boards, and they really put in a lot of time on subcommittees and attending meetings, and some wonderful people, and you have our local NAMI, just incredible energy, and for such a cause that is so needed to have supporters like these. Each year, we do honor Mental Health Month, May 2005, and May 22nd, we're having the NAMI Walk that I encourage everyone to attend. I know many of you are planning on walking and raising funds to help our country's mental health system, our county's mental health system, help look for ways for better recovery and ending the stigma of mental health. The resolution reads that "Mental health is critical for our well-being and vitality as well as that of our families, communities, and businesses. Only about half of older adults who acknowledge that they may have mental health problems receive treatment from any healthcare provider, and only a fraction of those receives specialty mental health services, which is the lowest rate among any adult age group. And more than three out of four employees who seek care for workplace issues or mental health problems see substantial improvement in work performance after treatment. Five to nine percent of children in the United States have a serious emotional disturbance, and mental health disorders such as schizophrenia, depression, anxiety disorders are real, common, and treatable illnesses. As many as eight million Americans who have serious mental illnesses do not receive adequate treatment each year. Untreated and mistreated mental illness costs the United States $150 billion in lost productivity and $8 billion in crime and welfare expenditures each year. Three million teenagers have considered suicide or attempted suicide just in this past year." The County of Ventura, the County Mental Health Board, the Mental Health Association, that's right, we now have a Mental Health Association, the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill, and their partners observe Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health illness. And this resolution reads, "Now therefore, be it resolved that the County of Ventura Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim May 2005 Mental Health Month. The County of Ventura also calls upon all Ventura County citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness." And I'll present this to you, Joan, and if you'd like to make some comments, and anyone else who would like to, please.
Thank you, Linda. On behalf of the Mental Health Board, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for proclaiming May as Mental Health Month in Ventura County, and thus calling attention, calling the public's attention to the incidents and impact of mental illness on our individuals in the county, families, and the community, and also, as Linda pointed out, Supervisor Parks pointed out, the impact on the workplace. I would also like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your ongoing commitment and support to providing needed mental health services in Ventura County. And I also thank you Supervisor Parks for acknowledging that the board is a very hard-working board, and this year in particular, it's been exceedingly hard. Not only are we carrying out the work that we do year after year after year, in addition to that, we are also working very, very hard to seek public input about needed mental health services in the county as a first step in seeking Proposition 63 funds for mental health services. And these funds will bolster, they won't replace, federal, local, and county, and state funds, but will lead to a transformation of the system into one of recovery and wellness for adults and resilience for children. So thank you again very much for this proclamation.
Thank you. Any further comment or board comments?
Well, I'd just like to say, these are really exciting times. I mean, we really have a chance, I think, to transform the system, and so we're all working hard to do that, and we thank all of you.
And thank you.
As a client within the Ventura County Behavioral Health System, and, you know, just speaking for myself, probably the second, second to housing, the second most important thing to me was to be serving on the Mental Health Board. It has given me such enrichment, and I would never in my life have been standing here saying thank you, and we work together, and we're going to continue to build a community who cares about us unless I had community involvement and participation and was welcome at the table. So thank you.
Thank you. Good words. Thank you. Thank you to the entire board for all the good work you put into the many challenges in front of us. Okay, board members, we'll move ahead quickly to our 10 o'clock time certain items, and apologize for the delay. Obviously, a packed agenda this morning. The first item up is item 20, to approve the receipt of funds from the Greenblatt Family Fund for the Behavioral Health Department. Ms. Schulman, good morning.
Good morning. I thought I would hold my remarks about May as Mental Health Month to now because mostly what I want to do is talk about how we're going to celebrate May as Mental Health Month throughout the month. The first highlighted activity is the one that's before your board now. That is our symposium, The Effects of Trauma and Attachment on Children and Adults. We have two nationally renowned speakers coming to visit us, May 18th, Alan Shore and Linda Chapman. And in order to make it accessible to all, we were able to receive a grant from the Greenblatt Fund at the Ventura County Community Foundation. And so I'm here before your board to ask that we can receive that grant to go ahead and help us to pay for the actual event on May 18th. In addition to that, I wanted to highlight two other big activities. We already mentioned the NAMI Walk, May 22nd, but we also have our open house and recovery training for our new building in Oxnard as part of our May as Mental Health Month celebration, and that'll be on May the 26th, it's a Thursday, in the morning from 8:30 to 11:00, and flyers and all of that are on their way. But we have Terry Gorski, who's a renowned substance abuse and recovery trainer, who's going to be coming to speak on adapting the recovery concepts into mental health as we start to really look at this transformation in the mental health system. So we're excited about that. And then on May 9th, Neil Adams, who was the medical director for the Department of Mental Health and recently moved aside to be in a consulting role, is going to come down and do a training on how to implement the Mental Health Services Act and impact consumers with individualized focus service planning and transformation, et cetera. So putting a lot of energy into providing several opportunities for our stakeholders, our consumers, our staff, and people to really start to dialogue about what transformation and recovery and mental health really needs to look like so that as we go forward in our planning for Prop 63, hopefully, we will all come with better ideas and education to be a part of it. So we're excited about all the activities in May, and certainly hopeful that we can have this activity with this board item.
Any questions on the item?
Move approval.
Motion and second. Hearing no objections. So ordered, and thank you.
Good luck.
Lots of busy month.
Thank you up there, by the way, for the presentation and working on it, and Roberta and that other person that's back home.
Item 21, Supervisor Bennett, Ventura County Law Day.
To make sure I say thank you.
Thank you very much. It's Mr. Hurley.
Mm-hmm.
There he is. Great. Here, if you'll come down, I will be brief. Besides the resolution, I do want to point out, and I appreciate District Attorney Totten and Mr. Claybon being here also, the, Clayman, thank you, I'm sorry, right? I blew that one there, Mr. Clayman, thank you. Besides the Recognition of Law Day, I also want to point out that the official day was May 1, but the event's going to continue through the month, and there's a special focus on lawyers in a classroom conducted in the public schools, and there's going to be a Law Day 5K Race for Justice held on May 21st at the Government Center. That's a 5K race. Supervisor Parks and I have already done our duty on the century, so I expect the other supervisors to show up at the 5K race now on May 21st.
And they came back unwounded. Congratulations.
But if I, but if I could, this is a... But if I, but if I could, this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors, whereas Law Day, May 1, is the Day of Celebration of America's Great Heritage of Liberty, Justice, and Equality Under the Law, and the practice of law in Ventura County, be in the criminal or civil courts, or through representation of private parties or public entities, is and should be recognized as being fully protective of those rights guaranteed in the United States and the State of California constitutions. And the County of Ventura, through this Board of Supervisors, fully supports the legal profession and those who practice in this county, and as part of the Law Day celebration, takes pride in the accomplishments and achievements of those attorneys. And Law Day 2005 is also a special celebration of the American jury system and the importance of participation in that system. Therefore, the Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in recognizing the celebration of Law Day. And Mr. Hurley, I'll ask you to make any comments and ask our other two esteemed guests to make comments also.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Bennett.
Good morning.
Other members of the Board. I'm appearing today not as just an Assistant County Counsel, but also as President of Ventura County Bar Association. And this is a special month for us. It's a special day as far as Law Day. It's a special month because this is the time that we spend to emphasize our activities throughout the entire year. It's been mentioned today that we're going to have the Law Day 5K Run, which has been active for 22 years. Joe Strowman, local attorney, has been the organizer of that event every single year. We also have Lawyers in the Classroom program, which is an opportunity for lawyers to go into middle schools, junior high schools, high schools, and talk to students directly about the Constitution, the importance of the jury system, and the rights of these students. We have a new program this year that's being organized by Michael McMahon, who is with the Public Defender's Office, and it's literacy in the classroom program, where lawyers go into classrooms and read just stories, just stories, to the students to show them that they care and to encourage literacy. I was pleased a few years ago, after entering the Law Day 5K several times, to finally isolate a category in which I was able to actually win. And it was the public service attorney who specialized in probate conservatorships and was accident prone. (laughter) I retired that trophy. Thank you very much. But this year, one of the special emphasis that we want to place is upon the American jury system. And with that, I would like to reintroduce Greg Totten, District Attorney, and Ken Clayman, Public Defender.
Well, it's very fitting today that you're paying honor to our veterans and those who have served in the military because those individuals, as we all recognize, fought for and have defended the freedoms and the liberties that we hold so dear in this nation, and certainly among those is our citizenry's right to a jury trial, and the belief and the reverence that we have in our justice system. And though Mr. Clayman and I have different roles in the court system and different responsibilities and pursue, to a degree, different results, I think both of us have a reverence for the jury system. You know, jurors, they give of their time, they give of their energy. It is a difficult task. It is a seldom appreciated task at the end of the day, but we are blessed, in this county, I must say, with a wealth of citizenry who takes it very seriously and are very responsible and help serve the justice system. So, I think it's fitting that as a part of Law Day, we pay homage to our jury system. Thank you, and I thank the Board for recognizing that.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Clayman.
Good morning. It's very nice to be in agreement with Mr. Totten on these issues. Not often do we have that. It is, and I love the emphasis on the jury system. It is a wonderful system. Great sacrifices is rendered by those jurors who serve, and I think, I used to say when I tried cases, I would tell the jurors that this is one of their greatest opportunities to exercise our democracy. And it's just a wonderful and unique system, the jury system. Not perfect, but certainly better than any other system, I think, in the world. So, it's wonderful that your Board and Supervisor Bennett are honoring, I hope, lawyers, jurors, and others who work for the rule of law. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
(applause) One other item before you leave, Supervisor Bennett. As an encouragement for the members to participate again in Law Day this year, which is May the 21st, we have
Uh-oh. Oh.
Special Law Day t-shirts for each and every one.
Okay.
Can I walk?
You can walk.
You can walk.
You can walk, and you may select your sizes at your discretion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
One vote on who gets what size.
Thank you so much. We're putting all the effort into recognizing this day. Thank you. Our next item, Board members, if we can plow ahead here, is Item 22, which is a public hearing regarding the 2005 Fire Hazard Reduction Program and Authorization for Fire Chief to Abate Fire Nuisances. And that is before us, and we're going to have a presentation, Chief Roper, or Ms. Morgan, or -- thank you. Good morning. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Marty Robinson, good morning. I'm Diane Morgan, Ventura County Fire Marshal. I'm here today because it's that time of year again when our fire hazard reduction program, commonly referred to, excuse me, as weed abatement, moves into high gear. With the amount of rainfall we've experienced this year and the growth of vegetation in our wildland interface areas, it's especially important that we maintain good defensible space. Ventura County has been very proactive in the area of hazard reduction, which made a difference during the wildland fire siege of 2003. Although no less, no fire loss is acceptable, we suffered less than any other county devastated by the fires. Other programs' success, what our program's success was noted and discussed at statewide meetings held after the fires. As a result, in the fall of 2004, State Senate Bill 1369 authored by Sheila Kuehl's office was approved by the Governor. Senate Bill 1369 echoes our requirement for 100 feet of brush clearance in high fire severity zones and is a tribute to our county's strong support for weed abatement. I'm here today to request authorization to abate fire hazards on properties described in the 2005 weed abatement listings on file with the Clerk of the Board. I'd like to take just a few moments and provide a brief program update, starting with last year's statistics. In 2004, we mailed 14,200 notices to the community. Eighteen lots were cleared by our county contractor. Two or three of those were cleared by the owner's request. That shows that we have over a 99% compliance rate. In an effort to reach the 100% mark and in response to public comments last year, we continue to update our program and our service delivery. This year, we have rewritten our Plant Reference Guide. I've provided copies to each of you. It now includes information on more than 500 native and ornamental plants and is available both in hard copy to the public or on our website. We're providing this guide not only to homeowners, but to developers for use in designing fuel modification zones around new tracts. Hazard Reduction Staff have been meeting with neighborhood groups and councils with a PowerPoint presentation detailing program requirements, followed by a questions and answer period. We've also redesigned the final notice, which is hung on the door of a residence or is posted on a vacant lot. The color's been changed to be more eye-catching, better visibility is good, and it's also now secured to the door so that it can't blow away. With this year's mailing of clearance notices, we've included an invitation to our Fourth Annual Wildland Fire and Safety Expo to be held May 21st from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. at our Training Center at Fire Department Headquarters. The Expo will provide a wealth of information for those living in the wildland areas. Vendors will be available on-site to discuss landscaping, weed control, fire-safe building materials, and many other relevant issues for interested parties. We're looking forward to a very successful program year. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you for your time and support, and I hope to see many of you at our Wildland Expo on the 21st.
Do we provide this in Spanish?
No, we don't. No, we don't, but we can take care of that.
In communities where we may want to take a look at where that's needed.
Absolutely.
Certainly at least something that's the, a notice issue. Other questions? This is a public hearing, but are there other questions at this time? If you wish to speak to the Board, you can fill out a blue card. I will be calling up. I'm sorry?
Certainly.
Certainly. I have two other cards first, but please feel free to come up and you can get a card and fill it out. Other questions at this time for Mrs. Morgan? Okay, then we will move to our public hearing, and I would invite Robert Loge to come up first, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I sent each of you a letter in form of a fax and a personal delivery one here today, and we received the notices again, and have called attention to the fact that these notices are somewhat contradictory and ambiguous. I've had the experience in the past of them to refuse to inspect the lots because the correct notice wasn't used and so forth. The yellow notice, this on the bottom of the various bills, says that, I'll be understand, I'll be notified if any additional work is required. If you fill in that notice, you're on the hook indefinitely because they only notify you if you're deficient, and when are they going to notify you? Anytime. You're never off the hook. You've had very bad experience with their record-keeping. So, I'd like, maybe somebody here could clarify that. There's a copy of both notices on the material that I made available to you. And here's a picture of my son when about 17,000 notices were mailed, and they had to be corrected within a very short period of time. They did it again. That's what 17,000 sheets of paper looked like stacked up. That was, it cost the county a lot of money. I just, I think that the Fire Department is a terrific fire department. They're doing a terrible job paperwork-wise on this thing. They're not required to keep copies of notices they send to people that they're deficient, that are, they're under threat of having their property cleared, and they do not bother to get post office verification. We've checked with other counties. Everyone else does that. We had, we lost a lot of money because of that. We want the Board to get involved to amend this notice. We've called it to your attention every year for many years so that if something goes wrong as a result of not paying attention to this, I don't think anyone can ever say that we didn't call these matters to your attention. We'd like the Board to give us assurance that we, that if additional work is required, that the people be given at least 10 days to do this work, 10 working days. We, at the time they went ahead and put this on our tax bill, and we didn't know about it. It turned out from their paperwork at a meeting that we went to where Ms. Morgan was one of the participants in the meeting, it turned out that we had been given two days to effectuate this. Of course, we were not notified at all. And at that meeting, they didn't send us a notice, and we didn't find out. About six months later, when we opened up our tax bill, instead of about $400, it was $3,700, they charged us $3,154, sent the outside contractor out. The only problem with that is they had told us that all of our lots were clear, specifically the lot that we had complained about the prior year, that they had first approved it, and then they called up, said they'd changed their mind, somebody else wanted it, they withdrew that and so forth. So, the following year, in 2000, came up this deal where we got caught for the $3,154. At the meeting, where Lady to my rear was present, they couldn't produce any person in the Fire Department who would say that they had mailed any notice as they supposedly sent to us. No person was produced. Number two, they couldn't produce any proof of mailing from the U.S. Postal Service. Number three, we asked them for a copy of the notice that was supposedly sent to us, and they said they couldn't give us one. We thought they were refusing to give us a notice. What it turned out was, they didn't keep any notices. They didn't keep our notice. They don't keep anyone's notice. They should be required to keep the notice anytime anything is sent to somebody, requiring them to take some action that could otherwise result in a loss of money to those people. In, we went to a board meeting around that time, and this board meeting was down the center in Thousand Oaks. It lasted until after 11 o'clock at night. A man approached me after the meeting and said he'd come to the meeting to help us get this matter straightened out. We were protesting this $3,154. I believe I seen the gentleman at the rear. At any rate, he said his name was Bob Roper. This is in the letter we sent to you. He said he'd come there to help us get us straightened out. That most certainly never occurred. We're still out the money. Various members of the Fire Department directed us along different paths of appeal, and trusting that we were being told the correct information, we did that. An extended period of time went by, and finally, we found out that our appeal process had been exhausted, our statutory time had been exhausted. We were told, "You don't have a turn-down under the law that would permit you to call it an official turn-down, so you can't go to court, not even small claims court over this."
Mr. Loge.
So, you're out of, you can't do anything about it. It's just too bad.
Your time is up, sir.
Okay.
You allow five minutes per speaker.
May I have a minute of my wife's time to conclude this?
Okay, I will do because there are two speakers.
All right. The point is, we have to clear these lots. We do this every year. There's one lot that I've cleared. We've spent over $15,000 clearing that one lot. I've been doing this for 28 years. The people there, right as of two days ago, have a lot of brush all around their house. They've got wood, cordwood up. They've got a little orchard in the front. I can tell you from seeing fire stairs since I was a kid. Santa Barbara County, I was there when they came up at Elwood and shelled the place. I remember hearing all about that and going over there and looking later. Very interesting. And so, these folks, these good folks don't have to do it, but we spend thousands of dollars every year cleaning these lots. We deserve at least to have the ordinance modified to the degree that the people there are told, "You must send out a notice by certifiable mailing. You must keep a copy of it, so if trouble develops, you can do that." And we need a prompt return of these notices when we put in for the repair, for approval. If we're not approved, we want a reasonable length of time to go out and do an additional, any additional work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. Kathy Loge? You would have, okay, thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. I've worked with John before. I've, was in the appeals, I worked for the Assessor's Office as a rural state appraiser, and I was in the Appeals Board with Jim Dodd, so I kind of know Supervisor Flynn. I own roughly around 100 acres up on Santa Paula, Ojai Road. It's surrounded by vacant land. I have a 600-square-foot ag building, barn. I was in escrow last year and sold it to the Fagan Canyon Development for the Fagan Canyon Project in Santa Paula. Got notices from the Fire Department to clear 100 feet around the ag building, and only about 20 to 30 feet of it is flat, and then the rest is severely sloping. Roughly runs between 600, elevation goes from 600 to 1,300 feet within 200 feet, so it's extremely high. I told the Fire Department that I wouldn't clear the slopes because it would, if I cleared the slopes, we're going to have an extremely wet year, soil erosion, some problems like that, and that since I was in contract, if I cleared it and we had slides, then I would be in violation of the rural state contract, and that the purchase wouldn't go through. And they said, "Fine, we'll have our," and so I went to Wyoming to buy another ranch. I was in Wyoming. I came back, and the Fire Department had been up on the property, and they measured 100 feet all the way around the property with stakes. And I called them up. I said, "How'd you get on the property?" The gate's locked, has no trespassing, and they said, "Well, doesn't apply to us." And I said, "Okay." So, I got the notice saying that we couldn't come to an agreement. They said they were going to clear it anyway. They said they were going to clear it anyway. And I said, "Well," I said, "you know, good luck." And my wife was up there at the barn one time, and the Fire Department drove in when the gate was open. She told them that I wasn't there, that they shouldn't make an appointment and come back, and, you know, that I would take care of things. And they said, "Well," I gave them permission, which I did not. So later on the day, I drove up there, and they were still there. I told them to get off the property. They made a complaint saying that I tried to run them down in my truck, tried to get the DA involved, and I had to hire an attorney. At that point in time, I was in escrow on that ranch in Wyoming. I moved to Wyoming. Actually, well, the next day, they said they'd be back with the Sheriff's Department to cut the lock on the gate. And I said, "Fine. If you guys got a warrant, the Sheriff's Department says you could come up here and cut the lock on the gate to get up here and do the weed abatement, then you have legal right." The Fire Department came up, Sheriff's Department came up, and the Sheriff's Department said, "No, you don't have legal right to cut the lock." Fire Department left at that point in time. I moved to Wyoming, moved my family to Wyoming because I was in contract here, bought a large ranch in Wyoming. I came back to pack some things up out of the ranch, out of the barn and stuff like that, and I was arrested and thrown in jail for a day for noncompliance. And the noncompliance was not for weed abatement. They changed it from weed abatement to a public nuisance. And there's no other structure around me. I don't know how it can be a public nuisance. It's all vacant land all the way around me. And after that point in time, I moved to, I posted bail the next day. I moved to Wyoming, had the attorney take care of it. The attorney just filed, pleaded guilty for me, paid a $1,200 fine, and allowed the Fire Department to come in later on, open the gate, and they did their weed abatement. It cost the county $7,500 for 100 feet around a 600-square-foot barn that's, you know, going to be bulldozed for the development anyway. I tried to prove them proof of the escrow instructions and things like that, and they didn't care. And I just think it's a waste of county time, effort. And when they were up there abating the weeds, Ms. Morgan's assistant, Ryan Cry, filed a complaint with Building and Safety saying that I converted the barn into a living area, that he visually had seen a kitchen in the barn, which is a lie. At that point in time, Building and Safety and Planning sent a letter to me saying that they were going to charge me about $150 to $300 a day for noncompliance and zoning. If I didn't get this taken care of, and my wife's pregnant at the time, and I'm in Wyoming, and I told them I couldn't come down all the way from Wyoming, and they allowed me to come down, and I rescheduled everything. I drove down all the way from Wyoming because I felt so strongly to take care of this in front of you today. And I'm just really upset with the Fire Department, and they got money just throwing around like that. I don't think they need any of that 209 money, the tobacco fund they're searching for. And that's it. And I tried calling Bob Roper. His phone number's 389-9704.
Mr. Burke? I'm sorry.
I drove all the way from Wyoming. I better, I deserve a chance.
Well, you do. And what I'd like to ask you to do is, if you would, I would like you to, if you have a moment, to go upstairs and meet with my administrative assistant, Martine Hernandez. I have taken notes from your comments here. It's the first I've heard of what you've just expressed to the Board. And I would like to really understand what took place. And Martine, I'm sure Martine is listening, and he's upstairs. If you could please take the opportunity to...
Well, I've met you at the Mupu School.
Give the full detail on it, yeah. It's the first I've heard of the situation.
I was all the way in Wyoming. I just...
I appreciate it.
You know. But anyway, called Chief Festerling, and he said he tried to put a complaint against Ryan Cry for making false accusations. I couldn't get ahold of him any other day at the Fire Department. I called Planning, and they gave me the name of whoever made the complaint, and it was Ryan Cry, the Fire Department. I called him at the work. He returned my calls. So I called Information, got his phone number at his home. I called his home and wanted to talk to him, and he said, "No, I don't work for the Fire Department, and I'm not the guy you're looking for." Next day, he's at the DA's office trying to file a restraining order against me, saying that I ran him down off the road, and I made threats on the phone. And I'm in Wyoming. The DA calls me all the way in Wyoming.
If you, I appreciate your comments, sir. If you would please take a moment and go upstairs.
So, and then I got this, they cleared the weeds in November, and then here I get another one. You know, it's a little ridiculous.
Okay. That concludes the public comment cards that have been submitted, and the items before the Board.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to move approval of the recommended actions, and also to state that the time that I spent, and Chief Roper and a lot of his staff, Diane Morgan, on the Governor's Commission for Wildland Fire and Urban Interf, whatever that was, there was a lot of work that went into it. Each meeting was held in places where there had been fires, counties where there had been devastating fires. And every meeting, there wasn't a meeting that went by that it wasn't commented about our weed abatement program and why Ventura had the success, if you call it that, at least with the fires, and fighting those fires and protecting structures, et cetera. And having been through all of those meetings and listened to people from the fire service throughout all of the affected areas, the comment is always the same. It is critical that we maintain good weed abatement. And, you know, I can understand, I certainly don't know the details, and it's Supervisor Long has offered her help, but just because there's no one occupying the barn doesn't mean that you still don't need that clear space because if a fire gets started, it can run, and that there's land around you that can be damaged. And so, I saw it so graphically that I feel very, very strongly about compliance with the weed abatement ordinance and how critically important it is to this county to maintain the safety of structures and the safety of life, and the safety of our firefighting personnel.
Any comments? Supervisor Parks?
Yes, and coming from a city that's basically surrounded by open space, we have a lot of homes that back up to open space and how important it is to make sure that you do the brush clearance. And even in some situations, you really want to go over 200, go to 200 feet instead of 100 feet to make it even safer in that area. And just want to extend my appreciation to the Fire Department for their, they do offer a lot of personal service. I know in Yerba Buena, they actually offered to go to people's homes and will visit your home if you want to and get a personal assessment of how you can make your property safer. And it's not just brush clearance. There's a lot of things that you wouldn't even think about that can make your home safer. And a lot of proactive things, I think, is what kept our county a lot better off than many of the other areas during the firestorms. Also looking at forming what's called fire-safe councils. We have one in Yerba Buena. I know that, I believe there's one out in the Ojai area, and may even form another one in Ventu Park because you can get federal grants as citizens who form these fire-safe councils to help make the area around your home safer. And it's all about prevention, and that's what we're here about. And I want to thank the fire service for their work on this and encourage everyone to get out there with their weed whackers who need to get out there. Thank you.
Other comments? Motion of the Board? Motion and a second. Hearing no objection, so ordered. We must move ahead with this. We truly have set the example in the state for weed abatement and taking care of it. Obviously, heard this morning, there are still some concerns with process, and I hope that we're able to get those concerns addressed, and appreciate the good work of our fire service and, as always, bringing this forward and, as always, looking for ways to improve it. Thank you. Hearing no objection, motion passes. Five oh. Now we're going to speedily move ahead to item 23, approval of the reorganization and remodel of the County Clerk and Recorder's Office. And our wonderful Mr. Phil Schmidt, welcome and good morning. Still is morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and good day to you, Mrs. Robinson. I didn't sing it like I did outside. My purpose for being here today is to ask for your approval of a merger, reorganization, and remodel of the County Clerk and Recorder's Office. This is just the first phase of a plan to improve efficiency and service to the public. Since 1989, the clerk is relocated from the courts to the lower plaza of the Hall of Administration. The public customers have been shuttling back and forth from the lower plaza to the main plaza between the clerk's office and the recorder's office, oftentimes to complete one transaction. What we're intending to do and what our plans would result in is that all of our public functions would be moved to the main plaza to the area currently occupied by the recorder's office, and all of our non-public functions, such as our data entry, our technical area, and our micrographics and imaging sections would be moved to the area now occupied by the county clerk. This will result in a much more efficient process for both the public and the clerk and recorder. One of the most noticeable benefits of the remodel would be in the marriage function. Currently, you get your marriage license in the clerk's office. You get married in the clerk's office. Not everyone, but a lot of people do, which, by the way, since July last year, we have done 1,074 marriages in the clerk's office, which is more than double what we anticipated at the time we started that program. So it's been very, very successful. Well, it kind of was that on Valentine's Day. And once they're married, then the clerk has to walk the marriage license up to the recorder's office to get it recorded and allow the couple to buy a certified copy of their marriage. One of the things in our remodel plans are to actually build a marriage room on the same level as where the recorder's office is now on the main plaza, and we would perform the marriages in that room and also make it available to the judges on weekends so that they wouldn't have to come here into the boardroom to do their marriages. They would be able to utilize our marriage room. This room can also be utilized for training and for staff meetings if necessary. A system enhancement program to the land information and imaging system is also proposed. This will allow electronic confirmation of recordings and filings, streamline the recording process, and decrease the amount of time that the title company representatives have to spend in the office. This will also allow for online applications for marriage licenses, fictitious business name statements, abandonments, and withdrawals, all a continuing effort to improve our service to the public. Phase two of this enhancement, a very important part of the program, is a total and complete conversion of all of our microfilm library to an electronic image. There's over 11,800,000 images that have to be converted, plus our index. This will allow the clerks to search and print an image right at the counter rather than to take an order from a customer, pass it on to the micrographics library, have them pull the tape out, make a copy. Some of this tape is old and brittle, breaks, causes us to have to make a new copy of the microfilm, so it can be a very delayed process. So we will eliminate the microprint section, and you'll have a much lower amount of time while you're waiting for your copies. The Board will be asked to approve this, the contract negotiations when a vendor has been chosen. An RFP and vendor proposals have been in the process for a little over a year now, and we've narrowed it down to two vendors, and we will probably make our recommendation this week. So I'll be back here in front of you again with another board letter to take care of that process in a couple of weeks. The next item I'm asking you to approve today is the purchase and installation of a fire lock vault and compact shelving unit in the Elections Warehouse. In 1993, the Recorder's Office took on a program of restoration of old public books and records. This is what some of them look like. They're held together with rubber bands, string, spit and glue, bubble gum, almost anything. This is one of our books with death records in it. Another book in a little bit better shape, but still, as you can see, some of these records are quite old and need to be preserved. This is what we want. This is one of the books that have been restored. They are completely taken apart. This is an old Book of Deeds dating back to the 1880s. Every page in this book was taken out of the old binding, if there was any binding left, and deacidified in a special bath where they actually wash every page. And then they hang them on a clothesline to dry because you can't use any artificial form of heat to dry them because it'll cause shrinkage. If there's any tearing, they fix it with a special Japanese paper and a special glue. And these books now have a shelf life of 300 years. And we're mandated by government code to restore and preserve these books. To date, we have spent almost a half a million dollars, and they sit on shelves in our micrographics lab. Not the best place for them. They are on microfilm, yes. We have everything backed up on microfilm for archival purposes. We know microfilm will last at least 100 years, and in case of a catastrophe, you can unroll it and read it with a magnifying glass. You can't do that with a CD. So the fire lock vault is a unique system in itself. Most vaults contain concrete in between their metal walls. In case of a fire, the concrete releases chemicals and moisture which go into the vault and act like a pressure cooker. A fire lock vault does not use any of these materials. In addition to being modular, it can be expanded and moved if necessary. The 1993-94 grand jury recommended that we put in a vault, but we didn't have the money to do it at that time. And finally, I ask that your Board approve the companion board letter from the Human Services Agency, or Human Resources. My wife works for Human Services, so I hear that a lot, from Human Resources establishing new classifications and deletion of obsolete classifications in the office. All of these additions, changes, and enhancements are funded from the Recorder's Automation and Micrographic Trust Funds, which were established for this type of progress. So there will be no impact to the general fund. Most importantly, we will benefit from an ongoing savings of a little over $245,000 per year. And that's just from the merger and reorganization. So I ask that your Board approve this action, and if I can answer any questions, I'll be happy to.
Other questions? Oh, no questions.
Fascinating. It's a genealogist's delight just to have those.
They are. I recently spoke to the Friends of the Library, and I took some samples. And they were just so excited. They said they wished that they knew I was bringing samples before the meeting. They would have doubled the size of the meeting. That was on Palm Sunday.
Oh, my. Questions?
Not a question, but a comment with a motion for approval of the recommended actions. I think this is precisely the type of thing that we're looking for, are these streamlining, modernization, whatever word you want to use, but the diligence that the clerk recorder has used in trying to improve his office and his office's service to the public is precisely the type of thing that we want to be doing, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I hope that you can get through, how many millions of documents did you say? I had a headache the minute he said that.
Approximately 12 million pages that have to be converted. And that will be an expensive...
Do you wear a robe when you marry people?
Yes, I do.
Yes, he does. I saw it hanging in his office. Anyway, I move approval, and many, many thanks and kudos for the effort.
Motion and a second?
And the companion. Can we do both items, or should we do individually?
No, just one at a time.
Okay, one at a time. So this is on item 23.
Thank you.
For the reorganization. Any, no further, any, no objection to that reorganization, seeing none, so ordered. It's about time.
Yes.
Public access, you're doing a great job. We really appreciate the work of your office and all your staff in getting behind doing this, and the support you received also from Dan Goodwin and Larry... behind doing this, and the support you received also from Dan Goodwin and Larry Matheny. I know it's important to have coordination with those offices also.
Well, and my staff make my job a whole lot easier. They're a wonderful staff.
Having Highway 150 open makes your job a whole lot easier.
I have to admit, I sneaked through a couple of times.
No. Ms. Robinson has a comment?
On behalf of our office, Phil, I also wanted to say how much we appreciate the leadership you've shown in redirecting the office and bringing it up to, trying to bring it up to current standards. It's, it's wonderful to see, so thank you for those efforts on behalf of our office.
Thank you. The item passes 5-0.
Do we have any cards on item 28? Didn't you say we were gonna take?
No, item 28, establishment.
I mean, item 20, yes, item 28.
Yeah, we just passed item 23. The one that's in sync with this, we can move quickly, is item 28, is the classification deletion issues with Human Resources Division related to the clerk recorder. And, it's pretty straightforward, other questions?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, seeing no objection. So ordered. Thank you.
Title of the ordinance?
That's right. That's, that's right. It is.
An amendment to the Ventura County Ordinance Code, Division 1, Chapter 3, Article 4, Civil Service System.
That's the read ordinance entitled only final adoption, set for May 10th at 9:30. Thank you. Next, we're going to, we see, we can move quickly here. I know we've got folks waiting on item 32. Item 31, Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. Move recommended action to point to Rihanna O'Neil.
Second.
Motion and second, any objection to that item? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. Item 32. This is an item that I brought forward, and it is, I hope it's self-explanatory. It is complicated, as, as we heard last week from our watershed protection district, the whole issue related to TMDLs. What we have before us is, is, is requests frankly from a, from a coalition of, of our agricultural community and water purveyors, and it's related to a hearing that's going to take place in front of the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board. And at that hearing, we are going to be challenged, I think, in our, in our region, particularly in our Santa Clara Valley, with what may be direction to the County Sanitation District of Los Angeles County that allows them, through the Saugus and Valencia Water Reclamation Plans, to continue to basically dump high chloride levels into the upper reaches of the Santa Clara River. My letter that's proposed to be sent to the LA Regional Board is asking that this board take a position that raises concern with both the, the highest level of chloride dumping allowed in any of our regions in this county, i.e. in the Cuyahoga and then even in the Santa Clara currently. Although it is more than the 100 MGLs, it is, it is still, in our region, still much lower than the 230 that's being proposed to be permitted by the action of the Regional Quality Control Board for the LA Sanitation District. The direct line of fire on this is our agricultural community. We know that the studies have already provided evidence that the damages avocado crops. There is the unknown of what other crops and what levels of chloride and impact, and obviously then the resulting impact to our, our largest industry in this county. So when this is brought to my attention, I thought it would be important for the board to weigh in on this discussion before the LA Regional Board, specific to the levels of chloride. We're, I'm not asking that the board say it should be 100 or 120 or 130, but raising the issues that 230 is double what is allowed in the current plan, more than double. And the other issue is the length of time that the proposal is, is before LA Regional that's asking that they are allowing LA Sanitation to have until 2017 to complete studies, when we know that there's already evidence out there, and if we, and if they join with us in some work that's already underway in the Santa Clara Valley, these studies can be done in a much shorter period of time, provide the evidence that's necessary to determine what level of chlorides have impact on crops, and, more importantly, provide some direction for solutions to lessen that impact, and certainly lessen the impact on our overall agricultural community. I have, there's been an amended letter put forward to the board, because there was concern raised in the closure on my letter to be sent to the Regional Board that affirms the 100 MGL limit. To remove that language and just say, in light of the significant concerns that were addressed earlier in the letter regarding the limits and the accelerating this, the timeline for the studies, asking for the LA Regional Board to acknowledge that and take actions that would support the same. If there are questions of me regarding the letter, we do have speakers who've submitted a card. Rob Roy?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, certainly.
Anything that happens in the Santa Clara River affects also the Oxnard Plains, because that's the water that goes into the aquifer zone, goes, it comes from the Santa Clara River. We're very concerned about this, because high chlorides do affect strawberries. And there are lots of strawberries, as you know, on the Oxnard Plain. The other fruit, or other trees they affect, it affects is avocados. But if you look at a map, which I have, of the Santa Clara River, and you look at some of the sample wells that draw samples out to test the chlorides, they're pretty high above the, above the Piru Basin. They're much further than 100 MGLs. I'm concerned that the chlorides are going to be able to begin to affect the Santa Paula Basin, and then finally, the, the Fillmore Basin, the Santa Paula Basin, and finally the aquifer zone. And once that happens, there's no return. There's no taking care of the problem. There's no solution to it. So it's a major, major, major issue. And what I see happening is LA Regional SAN holds the deck of cards, and the people taking the big gamble and not having anything really to say about it, if this goes through, will be the agricultural people in Ventura County, will be the downstream people, will be the city of Fillmore and the city of Santa Paula, who are going to have to maintain even higher standards to try to clean up the water that will be coming into those two plants, and there are two new plants going to be built. Believe me, this is a boring subject to most people, but it is one of the most important subjects we can be taking up. And we're going to have to go down there to the LA Regional Board, that's going to be in the city of CME Valley, and present some arguments. I attended a, a meeting yesterday at the Farm Bureau Office and learned, learned a lot from that meeting. And there were some people there, one with a PhD, so he's, he's got some credentials. He made some good testimony, I thought. I think that, that when we look at the science of this, the Groundwater Management Agency had played around this for a long time, and finally, 100 was set. But in some cases, the science is being corrupted on this issue, and I think we've got to meet it head-on. Anyway, I move that we support the letter. I know you've got some.
Yeah, I do have a card. Let me first open for the public comments. Rob Roy?
Chair Wong and fellow board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this issue. Very, very briefly, I'm here this morning with my fellow co-chair Rex Laird. We, we formed the Ventura County Agricultural Water Quality Coalition last December, basically into, in response to a problem that, that John had just indicated is developing within the Santa Clara River watershed. We have two wastewater treatment plants that are dumping 20 million gallons of effluent into the Santa Clara River every day, containing between four and seven million pounds of chloride. And as Supervisor Flynn indicated, that does not dissipate. It can only be diluted. We believe that because of the unique hydrology of the Santa Clara River, that it is moving downstream, and the long-term cumulative impact is gonna, is gonna basically adverse the beneficial users downstream, which is predominantly the agricultural community, and, and basically affect the water quality in our groundwater system. And much of that water can be diverted into the, by the Freeman Diversion Project into the Oxnard Plain, which will have a major impact upon our growers there in Oxnard. So, Thursday, some of us will be going to a public hearing in CME Valley to, to raise our, our viewpoints in opposition to modifying the NPDS permits for both of these treatment plants. I was not here, and I don't know if John indicated, but the, the standard that had been developed in 1994 was, was 100 milligrams per liter. They're gonna boost it up to 230 milligrams per liter during the entire 13-year period that LA SAN would like to study this particular issue. And unfortunately, from our perspective, we believe that, that the, the settlement agreement between the LA Sanitation District and the board is very myopic in its scope, because it's dealing only with the northern reaches of the river and doesn't take into consideration the downstream beneficial users, and that's one of the reasons why we want to bring this matter to their attention. We're hoping, well, we are going to be objecting to increasing the interim load allocation on the NPDS permits. And we're also hopeful that by bringing the public attention to bear on this issue, that we may get the board to go back and revisit the TMDL, chloride TMDL altogether, because we believe that, that many of the initial premises upon which they embark down this road, as John indicated, may be based upon some junk science. And so we're hopeful that as part of this process, we may get them to revisit this TMDL altogether. So, we very much support the effort of this board in, with regard to this particular letter, and wholeheartedly support your issuance of this letter to the Regional Board. And I'll answer any questions if there are any.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't have any other cards on.
Rob Roy has done a great job on this. I want to commend you for that.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And Rex also.
Rex and I have been the co-chairs in this committee, and we're both putting a lot of effort. And by the way, just for the record, our coalition represents over 1,000 farmers in Ventura County, the Strawberry Commission, the Avocado Commission, all the packing houses, Ventura County Economic Development Association, United Water Conservation District. We are, have an upcoming vote from the Association of Water Agencies. So this is a very diverse coalition that is very concerned about the quality of our groundwater here in, in the county, and that we very much appreciate your support of our efforts.
Thank you. Another thing I'd like to note is that the, that we in this county are taking steps to address our own chloride issues, and, and we know in Cuyahoga that they're, they're moved ahead with a brine line proposal. I know the city of Fillmore passed an ordinance that is, is phasing out water softeners, which is one of the contributors to chloride levels. And so they're taking some local control for local solutions, but it's hard to do this when you get the upper reaches that are just doing significant double dumping of chlorides that come directly in the line of fire into the Santa Clara Valley and impact so much of what we're trying to support and protect in this county. So with that letter as presented, I would certainly put a motion forward to support, if you would, taking this to the Regional Board. Motion and second. Appreciate your support, Supervisor Flynn. Any other comments?
I just wanted to thank you for bringing this forward after reading up on it, and I was thinking, we need a board letter on it, and there was the board letter, so I'm really glad to see that. It's almost like the Regional Board is schizophrenic when it comes to different watersheds. You know, here, they're looking at extending for over a decade a study to see damage when it's obvious what the damage is. And over in the Malibu Creek watershed, they don't want any time for studies and want to establish a requirement that's going to be incredibly, you know, incredibly expensive, hundreds of millions of dollars. So it's, it's interesting, and I wonder what powers come in to influence these kind of, as I see schizophrenic type of actions on the Regional Board's part, but.
LA Regional SAN is the 800-pound gorilla.
And, and you know, and if that's the case, you know, it's based on how big you are and how influential you are, and it's not based on the impact of your pollutant. I think that there definitely needs to be some change there, but I absolutely support the motion and look forward to having the Regional Board respect it.
Other comments?
We, we've got an uphill battle to try to win this thing, but it is nice to have a united front as we try to go after this.
Yeah. Yes, and absolutely, and thank you for all your organizing and good work on it, and really being able to take what is, can be a complex, um, issues and distill it down to what the core issues are and why we need to go and fight this with the LA Regional. So I look forward, and the motion is second, seeing no objection to joining the fight with you. Thank you so much. So ordered. Okay, item 23, Supervisor Michaels. 33.
23. I'm on the wrong one.
Yeah.
Um, yes, these are our new appointments and continuing appointments that I asked the board to approve.
Motion.
Two committees and commissions.
And a second. Seeing no objection to the action, so ordered. Thank you. Item 34, Mr. Coons, good morning. Still morning.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Again, we've taken immediate action on the projects that are needed to address the emergency with the Watershed Protection District. We have a tabulation of all the contracts that we have in progress. If you have any questions, we still feel there is a absolute need to continue these projects, and I'll be reporting back to you every two weeks on their progress.
Move approval.
Motion.
Second.
And a second, seeing, hearing no objection, so ordered. Thank you. Absolutely in need. Item 35, filing the last report on Benefit Assessment Program for Watershed Protection.
Good morning, Chair Wong, board supervisors, and Ms. Robinson. For the record, my name is Jeff Pratt with the Watershed Protection District. The purpose of the next agenda item is to report on the Watershed Protection District's benefit assessment for last year, to present your board's, our, our recommendation and the fiscal year's benefit assessment for next year for your consideration, and with your permission to establish a hearing date for the Benefit Assessment Program. A little bit of background, I'll be very brief. This was established, the Benefit Assessment was established by your board in 1988 for the purposes of paying for the costs of Watershed Protection District operation and maintenance, 200 miles of channel, 50 dams, various incendiary pump stations. It was amended in 1992 for the purposes of establishing an assessment for the countywide NPDS program. We stab amounts in there for the cities, for the unincorporated county, for the district NPDS responsibilities. And, lest I'm using too many acronyms, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System from the Clean Water Act implemented by the LA Regional Board. It was again amended by your board in 1995 for the purposes of flood dam, establishing a flood damage repair reserve. And recall that in 1996, Prop 218 froze the rates, and each year that we've reported subsequently to your board on the Benefit Assessment, the only changes have been due to corrections or additions to the assessment rule, not to the changes in rates. Annually, the Benefit Assessment generates about 11 and a half million dollars. Seven and a half goes to operation and maintenance. About 1 million is used as added to the flood damage repair reserve each year. The balance, 3 million, goes to the NPDS programs. All that's detailed in the exhibits attached to your board letter. And with that, I would request that your board approve our recommendations as they're presented in the letter, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Hi.
Supervisor Parks?
Um, I was looking all through here, trying to find out, well, what's the increase? But you're telling me there is no increase. This is just a continuance, so that's why I couldn't figure that one out. So I'm glad to see that. And I just wanted to note maybe before we come back to this, is Table 4, I believe it is, isn't, doesn't have a final tally. I think you, you left out a page in the, the report of exhibit, so you might want to look at that.
I'll look at it, thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions? Comments?
Move approval.
Second.
Of the recommended actions.
Motion and second to accept the recommended actions. Any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you very much.
Takes care of today, but won't take care of tomorrow. Thank you for your work on that. Item 36, we have our treasurer, tax collector, public administrator stepping forward to address 36 and 37, and good morning.
Good morning, all. The first of the items, of the two items I have, item 36, deals with the Community College District. They desire to participate in a pooled tax revenue anticipation note program with the other community college districts and the state. As part of all of that, it's necessary that we essentially say, no, we aren't going to do it for you. So I, I come to you in sort of a negative way, but it's positive. We're, we're going along with the request of the college district to allow them to participate in this by saying, no, we're, we're not going to do it for you.
Any questions?
No, I understand. Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second? Hearing no objections? So ordered. Thank you. Item 37.
Uh, this is for the Caneo Valley Unified School District. They desire to, to work with us on a $20 million trans this year, so this is seeking your approval. Of course, this is all at the liability of the district and at no liability to the county.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second, hearing no objection, so ordered. Thank you, sir. Correspondents' Agenda, item 38.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion to receive and file, hearing no objection. Hearing no objection? So ordered. And we have now an opportunity to go into closed session.
What a chance.
Yay. And, and there we have an added item that will be added to closed session as noted and filed, and we have lunch. And we will be back here for a 1:30. Let's do it.
Okay.
I'd like to call the Board to order for our 1:30 a.m., also known as PM, item. And it's, it's, that clogs close enough. And, welcome, welcome to the boardroom. We'll move ahead with the item, which is a general plan amendment, number GPA Sherwood Development. And, Mr. Vogelbaum, good afternoon. Ron, I know that. Hello.
First name correct.
(laughing).
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Ron Allen.
Thank you, Ron.[690.25][690.25](laughing).
I'm the Planning Division's Project Manager for the Letcherwood Development. The item before you this afternoon is a general plan amendment, a zone change and a modification to a tenant map. The applicant is requesting a general plan amendment and companion entitlements in order to take an existing approved map, which was forty-eight residential lots and one golf course lot, golf course lot, and increase those by twenty-eight new lots, bringing a total to seventy-six residential lots and one golf course lot. As you can see by the overhead... The project is in the Lake Sherwood community. It's outlined by this bold yellow line here. It's west of Trentwood Drive. It's east, excuse me, west and south of West Stafford Road and east of Carlisle Canyon Road, all within the Lake Sherwood community. At the Planning Commission hearing on April 21st, there were three individuals who spoke on this project. Mr. Boren spoke in favor of the project. Mr. Mayer and Ash expressed concerns regarding the proposed deed restrictions, landscaping, and residential lighting as what would be seen from Hidden Valley. Staff indicated that the existing, as well as the proposed, conditions of approval will address their concerns. After deliberation, the Planning Commission passed a Resolution 5.0 to recommend staff's recommended actions. And these actions are outlined in your board letter as items 1 through 7. This does conclude my presentation. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
I know we were talking about the lighting as it pertained to spillover effect onto Carlisle Road, but that they have the ability to have some lower lights, as well as to have it be downward pointing, and talked about globes that you can put on there that will also reduce the spillage of light.
We do have some standard conditions that does address that, and the Sherwood Development Company has CCNRs that also address the lighting issues.
And a large part of the change over there near the Twin Peaks was to get the development footprint off of the top of the mountains and get it down so people in Hidden Valley wouldn't have that view shed. And I, I know we brought in a lot of people from Hidden Valley also into the process and got their input as a result of their concerns, so...
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
No, there aren't at, not at the dais. We have two public speaking cards, and I'd like to call up and open the public hearing on this. And Nathan Boren?
Hello, Nathan Boren, 851 Lawrence Drive, Newbury Park. I own fourteen acres of land on the southern boundary of the Sherwood project contiguous to tenant of tract 4409. I've owned this property for twenty years. This GPA proposes a small increase of homes next to my property. I addressed my concerns of visual impacts to Bob Parmley, who promised to plant trees to help alleviate those impacts. This promise, along with the fact that the proposed density increases almost entirely on the same footprint as the current zoning, impels me to support the GPA for tract 4409. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Mr. Parmley?
Good afternoon, Chair and Honorable Supervisors. My name is Bob Parmley. I live at 752 Ravensbury Street, Thousand Oaks. I'm here as the applicant, and would like to be available to answer any questions, but had brought along a PowerPoint presentation to sort of walk you through the process that has led us up to where we are today in terms of the application itself. If you feel it's appropriate to hear a little bit more about it, be happy to share with you that process. Supervisor Parks' office, actually led by herself, extended a lot of time and effort in helping us negotiate with various homeowner association groups in the community, Trentwood Homeowners Association, Hidden Valley Association, Lake Sherwood Community Association, as well as the Sherwood Valley Homeowners Association. And over the last two to three years, we've been negotiating with, meeting with, listening to the community in terms of their response to our proposed plans, which started at one place and ultimately evolved to what's before you today. Be happy to share that with you if you'd like to see a little bit of that.
Interest of the board? Supervisor Parks?
I would like to just see this up there.
Okay.
I'll go through it as quickly as I can, given the fact that it doesn't seem as if there's a whole lot of interest in the crowd to know more than what we've already been through. But for the benefit of the supervisors who haven't heard about this or seen the details...
Appreciate it.
Basically, the project itself is six hundred and forty acres. These four, three phases here, 1, 2, and 3, have previously been recorded, phases 1, 2, and 3, which compose one hundred and ten acres. The remaining portion is five hundred and thirty acres, which is the area that's before you, where the density has increased and the zoning has increased to allow for these additional units. The additional units that we're asking for fall within the six hundred and thirty units that make up the overall project that was originally evaluated when it was approved back in nineteen eighty-seven. Let's see. Just hit the next one, or is there a quicker, oh, up here? Okay, stay off of that. Perfect. This is the original, and there is a discrepancy between forty-eight or forty-nine lots and seventy-five or seventy-six lots and one golf course lot as to how you count it up. There's an overlapping section right here in the dash two phase that was approved originally as part of the offsite development to the Carlisle project. It was approved probably four years ago now. And other than that complexity, this is the original forty-nine lot plan that had about one hundred and eighteen acres impacted, which produced the forty-nine home sites. Hitting that button, and I'll go here. Okay, so that's the overall project there with the revised plan. And it's a small scale, so I'll go to the north. There's one section in the north and one in the south. They're both contiguous, but we sort of revert, prefer to it the north and the south. The development that we had here, that you heard referred to by Supervisor Parks, was the Twin Peaks area. And there are two hilltops in this area that were a part of the original plan in terms of having development, one hilltop home on top of it, that became particularly sensitive when we submitted our plan initially, that had an increased density in the same general area as those lots, but on top of those hills, which became sort of like a, an effort that we became aware of in terms of how the community felt. They'd rather not have development on top of those hills, even though it was part of the original plan. Our goal was to increase the density to get the number of unit count that we needed. And we ultimately developed a plan that stayed off of those two original sites up here, kept the development back in a canyon in this area, and then had the remaining development up in a similar area, but stayed off of the Twin Peaks. On the south, there was again development down, this is the existing Sherwood development down here with Stafford Road, the villas. There were home sites above that, along this area here, five home sites down across the street from these, and this group of homes that are the back end of the new golf course that's being constructed right now. And so this development here increases in density, but footprint rise stays in the same general areas with home sites across here with, initially, we had a lot up in this area and a lot over here, that subsequently we eliminated in order to bring the impact down. We got it down to one hundred and four acres from the original eighty-nine acres on the overall footprint, and managed to get the biological impacts to be within a tenth of one acre in terms of either up or down off the original biological impact of the first project that was approved. What we did in order to communicate with the community groups is we had photographs where we tried to depict what it would look like, both with the original plan as well as these subsequent plans, so that we could both for our own evaluation, as well as to communicate to the community what it would look like when we were done with our plan. So we took through the valley, this is Sherwood here, and this is Petrelle Road that comes through, and we picked certain spots along Petrelle Road that would show the development, whether that's just coming into the valley, down by the lake, or at the clubhouse. And we started with this, which would be the original forty-nine lot plan that had the homes up on the hilltops, and then a couple of homes in the back over here, with most of the development happening out of sight from this particular area. This was done for the purposes of meeting with LSCA to show them the impact from the lake, which they requested, to see what does it look like from our side. And you kind of see the differences, mostly it just eliminates the home sites by bringing them down into the valleys more. So that was acceptable to them when they reviewed that. This is the other view coming in with the original forty-nine, with one home up on the top of the peak here, and there's another one around the corner that you can't see from this viewpoint. But when we revised our plan, we stayed off the hill to the right, but kept the development on top of the one in the middle, feeling that that was a fair trade-off. But again, to a lot of opposition from a variety of folks who registered their concerns, we ultimately landed on a plan that kept the homes down on the backside of that hill, and hopefully satisfied those concerns. From in at the clubhouse, again, this isn't on a public right-of-way, i.e. Petrelle Road. This is from a private golf club. In fact, this is the tennis clubhouse. Still was of concern to the residents at Sherwood. That's the original plan. That was our clustered plan. And then ultimately, we expanded the view to make sure that we stayed off of these hills here, and wanted to confirm that this other peak in the background wasn't impacted by our plans. And we had these renderings without landscaping to try to show the impact of the development that's proposed. Along Hidden Valley, you can see a couple of home sites in this area here that went away with that subsequent land planning. The next view, you can see one house there that as well went away. And then from Hidden Valley, there are two views deeper into the valley looking back, where you can see some homes up in these three here. Again, we clustered it and felt that we had less than the original, but it was still not desirable. So ultimately, by staying off of the Twin Peaks and lowering the homes in the back, we managed to eliminate either all of the view impact or very limited portions, which we've agreed on those home sites, and we've identified the ones that might be potentially vulnerable to do earth tone colored roof tiles on those, and then limit to not have any sport court lighting or any type of lighting that would shine back to the Hidden Valley as the residents there express their concerns for night lighting. Then this last view from the far west end of the valley with the home sites, you can see down here our subsequent seventy-seven lot plan, and then down to the seventy-five lot plan. At this scale, it's sort of hard to see, but that was the effort there. And then again, with the biological, this is the plan itself that has various types of environmental impacts that were originally part of the first plan compared to the second plan, where we either stay out of some areas completely. But all in all, the balance between the two ended up being very similar, mostly either up or down, and with the only real main benefit of staying out of some of the hilltop areas, we managed to reduce the fuel modification zone, which on the first plan was sixty-three acres, to this revised plan to twenty-one acres. And, you know, we could think that that'll produce satisfactory results. So if you have any specific questions, we've got our engineers and environmental consultants and land planners available if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions?
Did any of the people complaining live in existing hilltop homes?
I have no further public comment cards submitted. Anyone in the public wishing to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and it's before the board.
Now, I'll go ahead and move the recommended action, and it was a lot of effort. There were many different residents with a lot of different concerns, and I appreciated the ability of the Sherwood Development Company to sit down with those residents. And I really didn't think that would get to this point. I know residents along Carlisle are very concerned, we're actually bringing buildings down to the road, but because of a lot of extra touches that they're doing to make them acceptable to the community, they, they no longer object to it. And the effort working with the view shed renderings and really making a point of getting the buildings off of the hillside, out of the view of the main corridors, both in Lake Sherwood as well as on Petrelle, are very much appreciated. And again, this is something that the, it's easy for the board to approve when you don't have residents here opposing, and it's, it's not a fluke. It was definitely through a lot of effort, and I appreciate the flexibility and also with staff in working together to see that we can put forward something that could be acceptable to the community. So thank you for your effort, and I do support the proposal.
So motion, a second, to accept the recommended actions on this item. Any objections to that motion? Seeing none? Passes four zero. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. Thank you, staff, for your good work. Ron Vogelbaum.
Thank you.[1567.01][1567.01](laughing). Thank you.[1401.21][1401.21](laughing).[1402.21]